Welcome to the Institute of Advanced Research in Artificial Intelligence Special Session on its Traffic Forecast 2020 Competition here at NURPS. I'm Michael Kopp and I will be chairing this morning session with you. May I also introduce my co-chair Alexander Gutzer. An exciting program awaits us this morning, including introduction by our very own Sepp Hochreiter, a keynote from David Levinson, a behind-the-scenes look at how we prepared the data for this competition by Moritz Neun, and talks from our top prize winners from this year. Without further ado, let me hand over the reins to our first speaker who will be introducing the Traffic Forecast Challenge. He needs, in fact, no introduction at this venue. A true pioneer of AI, a founding director of our institute, and a professor of the L S Unit at Johannes Kepler University in Linz, Sepp Hochreiter.
Michael, thanks, thanks, thanks for so introduction. Welcome to the NURPS Competition Traffic Forecast. Second year, we are doing this, it's a very exciting competition. It's a multimodal traffic map movie forecasting. We already did it in Europe 2019, it's a great success. It's very cool methods and this here. We even get better results and could top that. This is competition. We're trying to tackle one of humanity's largest problems, using machine learning. Why is traffic one of humanity's largest problems? So one of the problem cities faces days is suffer traffic congestion, especially in cities in urban areas. People and the answer and people are expected to be mobile, be dynamic to travel from one area to another area. That's required by today's economy, by today's baby work. And also environmental concerns, air pollution, and it goes to climate change. How can we handle some mobility? Is out hurting too much our environment, is out hurting too much our earth? Goals are to minimize this negative in environmental and societal impacts of traffic. Traffic has air pollution via energy, it's consuming a big impact on resources of the earth and also on our society. We want to advance, adapt, and apply modern machine learning techniques to optimize traffic and to understand these complex systems. Optimize traffic means also building smart cities, optimize trash or waste procedures, how to get rid of it, how to reuse it, and also energy. All this topics, topics today cities have to face and which is also affected by traffic. So data we provided and the data we collected, high resolution, trajectory map to special temporal cells and then summarized as a movie, first as an image and image to different times builds this movie. So data is collected from different cities across all world. And so task then is something like a scene completion task or prediction task, you have to predict the next frame. You have to complete what's going on on the streets, what traffic is evolving. Here an example, how the data looks like. It's a top row, you see three images. One is the volume, how much cars on the streets. The second is the speed of the cars and the third picture tells you where's a heading, the direction. And now this is the image is a combined to one image by RGB, by giving them a red, a green, and a blue channel. And then we have this RGB image and this allows now to use image processing. It's systems, it's allows us to use all the tools we developed for vision like convolutional neural networks. Unit, unit is very popular in this traffic forecast competition. And using all this vision-based techniques, the results of forecasting, how traffic is evolving can be enhanced a lot. Here's an example, it's Berlin, Germany. You see image, also same scene, but different time points. And you see things are happening. Perhaps you see it's upper left, there's not so much happening at the center. In contrast to the second row, there's much more happening at the center. You see things are changing, a different daytime, a different days of the week, the situation are changing. And this is reflected by these images and server doing this forecasting allows us to predict how traffic will be in the next minutes, in the next hours, you can predict how traffic is evolving. Now, in this new challenge, in this new competition, there were something introduced new compared to our last years, traffic forecast competition. We have a new coding, volume and speed is nine four directions. We have new dynamic and side channels. Yeah, we also include now events and incidents, what's happening locally, poll, average junction, and street properties. This is also data is enhanced by this side information. We also included additional cities, there are more cities. And also very interesting is we now have complementary data from satellites. We have multi-channel pollution data and multi-channel weather data. And this is a big chance also to go in direction, how is traffic affecting air pollution? What's happening in this direction? Or how is weather affecting traffic? Because if it's raining, perhaps more guys go by car or by public transportation. And this is new kind of data opens up new directions where we want to look into to optimize traffic depending on the weather, depending on the daytime, on the season time, and reducing pollution. Here examples from this side channels from this additional data, we have weather data. It's a very important impact factor for traffic. The first is street network data, also the street condition values. And where we want to increase and focus on also is this air pollution data because we want to optimize data in such a way. Set the environment is not affected so much, which is one of our major goals. And it's important if we look at our cities, if we look at some cities in China, whatever. They have to face a problem that if traffic is very heavy, there's smoke over the city. And that's not good for humans, that's not good for the environment. And we have to deal with this, therefore we have to tackle this, we have to optimize traffic, we have to optimize traffic. So we don't hurt our environment. Here, my last slide, it's an outlook for 2021 for you guys. We intend to do this competition again, but also perhaps this more direction also optimizing with respect to air pollution and stuff like this. But 2021 challenge uses the data from this here from 2020. And here's a traffic paradigm might have changed because we are now in this COVID crisis. And now the behavior of people might have changed. And that would be interesting, how traffic changed if we are in this specific situation. And can we extrapolate to this, as still some rules valid can we deal with such crisis? If they will come in the future, also optimize traffic. If when, when the situation is new, when situations appear with have not been encountered in the past. I want to thank all the participants of the challenge. Congratulations to the winners, it's very impressive what's achieved. And thanks for getting involved in this topic. Thanks for getting involved in this major machine learning application, which tackles one of humanity's largest problems. That would be traffic and mobility. Thanks and bye bye.
Thank you very much, Sepp, for that great introduction. I am delighted to introduce our first keynote speaker for today, Professor David Levinson. David is a professor of transport engineering at the School of Civil Engineering at the University of Sydney. He's an honorary affiliate of the Institute of Transport and Logistics Studies, where he is also a member of the Board of Advice. He received his PhD in transportation engineering at the University of California at Berkeley in 1998. His research interest spanned transport from engineering and design through policy and planning to geography and economics. His most recent research emphasized this transport land use interactions, accessibility, and transport system evolution. I cannot wait to hear his keynote now, and it has the intriguing title, "The End of Traffic and the Future of Access." David, I hand the floor to you.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone for coming. And I enjoyed reading a number of the projects and ranking the various competitors here. So I'm going to talk about the end of traffic and the future of access. And so, as mentioned, it's a provocative title. It's based on a book that I've worked with, with Kevin Kreizek, who's at the University of Colorado. And we start off with a hypothesis, we're looking backward from the future. And those of you who are familiar with US history will remember that the Interstate Highway Program in the United States launched in 1956 under the Eisenhower administration, it was signed into law in fact on June 29, 1956. And Eisenhower had been very familiar with the success of the German Autobahn in World War II and was very dismayed at the state of the US highway system. And so he finally was able to push through an interstate freeway system, which ultimately was completed in its basic form by the early 1980s. So we imagine 100 years into the future from that point in time, which is 36 years from today, and ask the question, remember traffic, what happened to traffic? Remember work, remember going to office buildings, remember having a long-term career, remember going shopping, remember advertising, long-distance trucking, owning a car, the sport utility vehicle, driving downtown, traffic lights, gas stations, waiting for a bus, seeing the highway, parking your car, or driving without having to pay a toll. All of these things are things that I suspect will change over the next few decades. That things that we used to take for granted as being a stable part of our environment are changing. And we can see some of these changes already in the last year with COVID. A lot more people are working from home rather than traveling into the central business districts of major cities. Office buildings are emptied out for a variety of reasons, including personal spacing, people not wanting to use public transit to get to the downtown areas and so on. But there's other changes that are coming and that's just going to make traffic is one of these things that could very well disappear as we know it. So we need to look back, we need to look back about the past 100 years and see how things have changed. As an American by birth, I think of someone like Henry Ford, giving us the mass production of the automobile. Obviously Europeans have different sources of the inventor of the automobile and the progenitors of the auto from an earlier point in time, but we typically date the mass production certainly in the early 19, the first decade of the 1900s as being a key point. And in the US, vehicle kilometers of travel per capita rose pretty steadily through the 20th century. There's a downward trend during World War II. And it flattened out at the beginning of the 21st century. It actually peaked around 2003 and has more or less fallen since, more steeply during the global financial crisis, picking up some since then. And we can compare that with passenger trips by public transit per capita, which peaked in 1946. But really, and that was, of course, as a response to the fuel and tire rationing of World War II, but really peaked in the early 1920s and has been declining ever since. And has been level at a per capita basis at a very low number for decades at this point. And of course, in the post-COVID era, it's going to be lower still. So things change, modes that were once popular like street cars, trams, basically disappear from our environment, might the same happen to the automobile as we know it? Okay, so we can look at various changes and this is paved roadways and unpaved roadways per capita. And unpaved roadways per capita have declined and part of that's because many of those unpaved roads were paved over, this is over the last 60 years. We can look at registered motor vehicles in the United States. Registered motor vehicles in the United States have increased with population, but they haven't increased in the last 20 years, the way they did during the 20th century. And motor vehicles per capita have fallen. We can look at time spent traveling per capita, and this is data through, from 2003 through 2013 from the American Time Use Survey. And we can see that many activities are pretty similar over, I mean, it's very hard to change a big number of an average across a population of 300 million people. But one of the things that you do see is that time spent traveling went down from about 73 minutes to about 67 minutes, which doesn't sound like a lot of minutes, but think that's almost 10% in 10 years. Okay, and this is time spent traveling for different activities. Okay, so we're significantly down and this is to 2013. I imagine what it looks like in 2020. Okay, we can look at person trips per day by age of year, by age and year of birth. Okay, and so we're looking at cohorts here, and this is from the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area. And we can see, of course, as we might expect, older people travel less than younger people or middle-aged people at least. And we can see what this looks like for people born in different cohorts. And this was data that was collected in the 2000 and the 1990 and the 2000 and the 2010 travel surveys. But then we can look at people who are born between 1974 and 83, and they travel less when they're 18 to 28-year-old than people who are born in the decade previous. And then the people who were born in the decade after that traveled less still. Okay, so we can look at the same kind of data for trip distance and we see the same pattern, which is that younger people are traveling less at the same age than older people did. And this has carried through over the last 20 years. I'm expect it's even stronger as the new, when the new survey was will come out in 2021 or so. And there's lots of trends and everyone's seen the S curve, this blue line, which describes system deployment over time, which we says, we, you know, we have this growth period, this birthing period, we have a steep growth period, and we have a mature phase. And the problem with forecasting is when you're looking at the rate of growth, you're generally looking backward and extrapolating forward. Obviously, no one in this group would do that, but when you see forecast, this is largely what is done. And what happens is when you're looking backward as the rate of growth is increasing, you're going to have an early forecast that's too low relative to the actual change. And when you're looking backward in the late stages of an S curve, you're going to overestimate the amount of something that you're going to get relative to what you actually wind up getting. And we see this happens all the time. This is an example of vehicle miles traveled, remember this is the US, so we still use miles in the United States, from the United States Department of Transportation. And every year, they basically did a linear extrapolation and expected it would continue to rise, 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 but the actual number is flat. Okay, and we could go forward, not to say that it never goes, will never recover a little bit, but it's certainly not growing at the same rate as it was growing in the 1990s. And then the extrapolations, which assume that it would continue to grow at that level, were just simply flawed. Now, less traffic is a good thing, okay, traffic creates problems. Many, many different kinds of problems. Cars crash, they kill 1.3 million people per year globally, I think that's a pretty important outcome. Cars pollute, which might kill a similar number of people. Although one of the questions is which people are you killing? And cars crashing tend to kill people in the middle of their lives, whereas car pollution tends to shorten lifespan. So it tends to kill people towards the end of their life, which might not be quite as bad from a moral calculus point of view, but death is a bad thing. Noise is annoying, it has a lot of economic cost to it, but it also has a lot of mental cost to it. Cars consume lots of space, so the US, the paved area of the United States is the state of Virginia highlighted in red there. That's an enormous amount of pavement, which has all sorts of environmental consequences. And cars isolate, so if you don't have a car, you living in a landscape where everyone else does have a car is going to be very inconvenient. Your distances are going to be spread out much farther. Stores that used to be walkable 100 years ago are now kilometers apart because people are expected to drive. Cars isolate in other ways, of course, you're in a shiny metal box surrounded by glass as opposed to interacting with other people, which may be great in a time of pandemic, but it creates a lot of social isolation otherwise. So cars have a lot of negative effects and optimizing them might not be the best thing to be doing. So why has America's traffic killed is probably too strong a word, but why, what's been happening to it? And we can think of the famous novel Murder on the Orient Express by Agatha Christie, which has been out for 100 years, so it won't be a spoiler to say that everyone did it. We have changing demographics, we have different sets of people in the population. And this doesn't show that the rate of immigrant population and the younger population tends to be much more heavily immigrant than the older population in the US and also lower income as a consequence of that, as well as having different cultural norms and mores. So we see differences in people's willingness to travel. We have changing nature of work, this is US labor force participation rate from 1948 to 2017. And it peaked in the late 1990s, now fewer people in the working age population are going into the workforce. And of course, this has dropped significantly in the past year as well. Labor force participation rate projections, of course, we say the same kind of extrapolation problem this time in the other direction. Labor force participation rates actually leveled off and people were projecting that they would continue to go down. Now, of course, we're going to see a huge drop-off in the 2020 period when this is updated. We can look at annual hours of work, people are working less than they used to, and this is for different countries. The US is at the bottom, Australia where I am now. And we can see people used to work 3,000 hours a year 150 years ago and 20 years ago, when this data was compiled, these data were compiled. And this is from, I believe it's from our world and data. We can see that people, Americans work harder than Europeans do, sorry. But all of us work less than we did 150 years ago and it's less than 2,000 hours per worker. The French are under 1,500 hours per worker. At home working has been increasing, not at perhaps the rate that we will see in the future, but it has been steadily increasing over time, enabled, of course, by internet technologies. And so the number of people who were working four to five days per week is basically flat, actually dropping a slight amount. But people who are working a little bit at home in lieu of going into the office has been increasing steadily. And the number of people who never work at home has been dropping. Of course, time spent shopping is another one of these things. So the major trips purposes tend to be things like work and going shopping, work is the dominant of these. Even though only about 20% of trips are work trips, they're very important because they occur during the peak hours and they're so highly concentrated. And because the distances tend to be longer, time spent shopping by female non-workers, people who have the most time available to shop are non-workers compared to workers, has dropped significantly from 1990 to 2011, and this is going to fall off a cliff in the next, over the next decade. Male non-workers is down, female workers is down significantly, and male workers is also down. So time spent shopping per day is down, people aren't going out shopping if they're not, if they're not spending time doing the shopping, they're ordering from home. Typically, it was said that Black Friday, that the day after US Thanksgiving is the busiest shopping day of the year. There's a group called Strong Towns, which advocates for a certain kind of urban development. And they've gone around taking photographs of empty shopping center parking lots on the supposed busiest day of the year, basically making the case that we're overbuilt, we're overbuilt for retail and we're overbuilt, especially for the amount of parking that we've provided. We can look at food and alcohol expenditures, this is data from the United States Department of Agriculture. What are people doing instead of shopping, they're spending their money to not buy food and bring it home, but to go out to eat. And of course, this has dropped in the last year, but I expect this will pick up again when people feel more comfortable going out to eat. And people are doing a lot of their social activities in different ways, but a lot of these are now done virtually. And so we look at travel by purpose per household from the US National Household Transportation Survey. And from between 2000, between 1995 and 2009, the total amount of travel has gone down. And it's gone down particularly for social purposes as people substitute virtual connectivity from our smartphones for the actual physical connectivity that we used to engage in. And we can look at this in individual behavior and there's a series of types of, these types of diagrams which show the range, the independent range that an eight-year-old would have. And if you go back to 1919, and this is in the UK, a man named George, then a boy named George had a huge territory that he was allowed to go to by himself unaccompanied by a parent. And George's son Jack in 1950 had an area that he could go, he could go about a mile as opposed to six miles. Jack's daughter Vicky can travel a few shorter distance and she was allowed to walk a half a mile away. And Ed can't even go to the end of his street without getting controlled by his parents or yelled at by the neighbors. The amount of independence we've given our children has seriously declined. So we've changed people from being independent travelers to dependent travelers, supervised travelers. They view life now as a passenger rather than as an active participant in the driving activity. And so they're viewing the world from the backseat of a car, not even the front passenger seat of a car, but from the backseat of a car. And that doesn't encourage you to think about driving your own car in towards the future. Now, of course, fuel prices are very cheap relatively, this is in the US, higher in Europe, of course, due primarily to taxes. But fuel prices have been an impact, have had a huge impact on the amount of driving. So if you look at when did driving start peak in the US, well, there was a sharp runoff and run-up in fuel prices around the same period. And as we saw this run-up in fuel prices, we saw vehicle kilometers traveled per capita fall significantly. And as fuel prices fell in the 20- fall significantly, and as fuel prices fell in the twenty teens due to, um, changes in supply and particular things like fracking. Um, we saw during this period with low fuel prices, we saw demand ticking up again, not overtaking where it was, but this is an important factor. And we have competing modes, so people, um, are more willing to, uh, bike and walk. And this is a comparison from Minneapolis-St. Paul region between summer of two thousand and one, summer two thousand and eleven. And the number of pe- the number of people using automobile is down in two thousand and eleven compared to two thousand and one. Like I said, um, technologies change and automobile is a technology and there's no reason to assume that it's going to continue its upward trend the way it did. And we can only, we can look at mail, um, this is mail handled by, uh, the US Post Office from nineteen twenty six to twenty fifteen. Went up and went up and went up, leveled off with the rise of email, and then began to collapse with the rise of social media. Okay, and electronic banking and all of the other things that we do that replaces physical pieces of paper. So we have a set of new technologies coming, everyone's familiar with these, uh, we'd have electrification coming. Um, and there've been major changes in the entire energy sector. Uh, this is a price index for solar photovoltaics, uh, for Australian cities from two thousand twelve to twenty twenty. And we can see renewable price, renewable energy prices have fallen significantly over the last decade. Uh, solar most significantly, less than half of what it was ten years ago. This means electricity is cheaper, which makes it a better substitute for fossil fuels, which is good, all things being considered. Um, we can see the prices of battery storage have fallen significantly over, um, the last decade. And this means that you can get more kilowatt hours per dollar. And the question of how long does this continue is still debated, but it's, it is an important question. So there might be constraints on how much further the battery cost can drop. On the other hand, this week, uh, headlines, a major breakthrough, QuantumScape hails test results of solid-state batteries. So there's new types of batteries being developed, which will be more efficient, make better use of lithium, have longer range, be less expensive in the long run. Potentially, so all of these things are potent, are, are changing. Um, and the effects of electrification of people's willingness to travel are, are not fully, fully clear. If electric vehicles are in fact cheaper than internal combustion engine vehicles, people should be willing to travel more with them. But they also make modes like bicycling and public transit less expensive to operate. Or, and e-bikes make bicycling much easier to do and, and rougher terrains and people can go faster. So it helps competitive modes just as much as it helps the automobile. So the question is, where's the crossover point between the internal combustion engine and the electric vehicle? And what's interesting is that this crossover point is becoming, has been coming closer and closer in time. In twenty seventeen, it was estimated to be in twenty twenty six, in twenty eighteen, it was estimated to be in twenty twenty four. And in twenty nineteen, it was estimated to be in twenty twenty two. Now that we're in twenty twenty, I'd expect the crossover point will probably be in twenty twenty one. That's interesting because once it is cheaper to buy an electric vehicle than an internal combustion engine vehicle, certainly over the lifecycle, but, but even over the initial costs, people are going to start buying electric vehicles and the internal combustion engine will become a thing of the past. And the cost of the battery is part of the internal combustion engine, as part of the vehicle, has been shrinking, um, while the cost of the internal combustion engine, of course, has been relatively unchanged. So we see battery costs dropping from being fifty percent of the cost of an electric vehicle to under twenty-five percent forecast by Bloomberg as of last year, but it could be even lower still if these new techno- battery technology breakthroughs are important. Now, electric vehicles sold have been continuing to increase, um, globally. Uh, more than five million as of the second half of last year. Um, the Norwegian market is now over sixty percent market share. The UK market is following suit, although not at quite as rapid a rate, and you see this doubling um, of electric vehicles increasing. So with the bottom part of that S curve that I described for you before, even in the US, um, electric vehicle sales have been increasing and notably here, hybrid sales are a much smaller share while battery EVs and plug-in hybrids, uh, plug-in EVs and extended-range EVs are, are growing over time. Um, and more and more vehicles are entering the market. Um, fuel cells are still a tiny blip, but that is a possible future as well. Um, charging infrastructure is getting better and better, these are Tesla superchargers. Um, and obviously, people can charge at home if they've got a, a PowerPoint at their own home. Um, and these networks are growing as well in places like Australia. But in the future, we might not even have to go to a charger, we might have in, in-road wireless power transfer. Uh, in the first application of this is probably buses because they have regular stops and the buses don't want to be carrying around very large batteries. So they can carry a small battery, go from stop to stop and recharge while they're loading passengers. But as you develop the technology for wireless charging of buses and similarly wireless charging of cars as we go home, just as we now have wireless charging of, of phones, it starts to make sense to put wireless charging devices into roads and cars can get billed for this. And this provides a new revenue source for transport agencies, but also makes electric vehicles that much more convenient. So that's one of the major cha- trends that's going on. Automation, um, is coming and we really should be thinking about, uh, what SA level four, which is, uh, high automation, where, um, the car can drive autonomously in a geo-fenced area. Okay, not necessarily everywhere, but the size of the geo-fence will be steadily increasing over time. And, and these vehicles already exist, uh, Waymo is driving them in Chandler, Arizona area. Um, and these are level four vehicles and are much more widely deployed or level two vehicles, which have driver assistance. Um, things like Tesla's autopilot and, um, General Motors' SuperCruise. Now, this is going to have a major change in how people travel. Um, foremost is it should be significantly safer so we can get rid of some of those one point three million deaths per year uh, due to automobiles as more and more of these are deployed. Um, but it's also going to have significant changes on vehicle form, which I'll talk about in a little bit. On the need for parking, right, and where parking needs to be located, because these cars can drop off passengers and then drive humanless to a place to park. They can go home, if they're shared vehicles, they can pick somebody else up. Um, in theory, they should add to the capacity of the transport network because they're able to follow at a much shorter headway than human-driven vehicles can. Um, this obviously waits to be proven and is going to be difficult in a mixed traffic environment. But in a fully autonomous environment, we should see si- significant capacity improvements. Of course, cars will be driving around without people, which suggests there's a lot more traffic. It provides mobility for the immobile, people who now can't drive themselves and are dependent, um, including disabled people, children and elderly pe- many elderly people will now have the opportunity to travel by automobile, and that again suggests that we will have more traffic, uh, lowering the costs because, uh, if the, you can take out a number of the human-facing control elements of a vehicle, the cost of a vehicle should drop if it doesn't need a steering wheel. It, if you're increasing capacity, you can do things like retrofit your rights-of-way, your street space, um, reallocate that street space to other uses. For instance, bicycle lanes in places that don't have bicycle lanes or planting trees to create a, uh, cooler urban environment. Um, some people might just live in their cars or recreational vehicles, which are constantly traveling. So we can have a new generation of nomads, of course, that increases traffic. It makes the ownership model of having fleet ownership of vehicles rather than personal private ownership of vehicles much more feasible because the cars can come to you. And it suggests new types of activity in motion when people don't have to worry about the driving task. And as these are deployed, obviously, the wealthy get stuff first, because what's the point of being wealthy if you don't get stuff first? So wealthy people will have autonomous vehicles before non-wealthy people and they'll be able to show that off because the cars will probably have some kind of signifier showing that they're different. So there's going to have social implications. Now, this is steadily increasing the amount of, is cumulative kilometers traveled in autonomous mode by, uh, Google and Waymo vehicles, um, level four vehicles as well as Tesla autopilot, um, and this is data through twenty twenty, through early twenty twenty. And we can see on the Y-axis, this is a log scale. So this is basically following one of our S-curves and we're in the early part, the exponentially increasing part of the S-curve. Because this is basically tracking a straight line on a log scale. And we can see that, um, the Tesla has orders of magnitude more, uh, cumulative kilometers traveled, but it's not as self-driving as the Waymo cars are. So, but both of these are increasing in the question of when the, does level four overtake level two, I think is still an open question, but something we should be keeping in mind. And this week was described as, um, by commentator Brad Templeton, who thinks a lot about the robo- robot or autonomous vehicle industry, is the biggest week in robot car history. There've been a number of major announcements, including Waymo opening up the taxi service to the general public. Uh, Cruise, another one of these companies doing, uh, tests with no safety driver in San Francisco, um, which is a little bit more complicated than Phoenix, not in the most complicated parts of San Francisco yet. Um, Aurora buying, uh, Uber's self-driving unit, um, and several things going on in, in China. So they've been getting better, um, disengagement rate's an important, uh, of a metric. And we can see that we have a disengagement rate as of twenty eighteen of the number of times that the human has to intervene of once every seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven kilometers, approximately once per year as of twenty eighteen. Uh, this is data that they had to report for California, they're keeping as much data under the hood, so to speak, as possible. But some of the data has to be revealed based on state regulations in the United States. But this is a number that's, that's increasing, or well, the, um, denominator is increasing, which is good. So if we can get it to once every million kilometers or once every hundred million kilometers or once every billion kilometers, then you get to the point where people are very, very comfortable in this because they don't have to intervene. So we'd expect to see that there'll be some sort of S-curve type of deployment of, uh, level four types of vehicles. You know, and we can argue about where they are, obviously approximately zero percent as of twenty twenty. Um, but increasing steadily and, and my guess would be by twenty forty, the dominant share of the automobile fleet will be level four. Basically autonomous in geo-fenced areas, which will be by then most public roads. Now, that's twenty years away or nineteen years away. And at some point, we're going to have to shut off existing, uh, human-driven vehicles or limit their use. But that day is not yet today, this is going to be a long deployment. We're changing all of the cars in the world essentially, and that's going to take a while. So we've got level three vehicles on the market now, depending on how you define them. Arguably, the latest Teslas are, are level three, like, level two and a half, but they're driving on city streets as well as on freeways. Um, in twenty eighteen, Cadillac SuperCruise is a, is a, uh, more effective on freeways than Tesla's probably because it's hands-off, whereas Teslas, you're supposed to touch the steering wheel every minute. But, um, it doesn't operate off of freeways yet. And my guess is level four will be available as a feature on new cars, uh, in twenty twenty five. Um, required in new cars by twenty thirty and required for all cars by twenty forty. Okay, so human-driven vehicles will eventually be prohibited from public roads aside from parades. So what are people going to be doing when they're not looking at the steering wheel? They'll be doing other kinds of things, well, what do they do now when they're in the car when they are supposed to be paying attention? Um, they eat and they drink, um, they smoke and they use drugs, probably shouldn't be doing that. Um, they pray, they take care of their children or yell at their children. Um, and they engage in personal care activities, shaving, putting on lipstick, those kinds of things. So we can do more of that over time and people who will no longer have to worry about paying attention to the road and people will quickly get used to this. Um, will start to do other things. It's not really, you know, an automobile is not really the place you want to be, um, reading a book probably. Um, but we already listen to music and listen to audiobooks and things like that. But there's still enough jerkiness and braking maneuvers, probably even with automated vehicles, at least until the full fleet is automated, that this is going to be an issue. And in urban streets, even when the full fleet is auto- be automated, you still have pedestrians and bicyclists who are going to behave in unpredictable ways to the detriment of those who are in the automated vehicles. Now, all of that implies that if you're more productive when you're in the car, you're willing to travel farther. And that suggests perhaps more travel, but more travel in self-driving cars rather than in traditional cars. Um, you, if you're willing to travel longer. So people often talk about automation and connectivity in the same breath. And we need to think about what kind of connectivity they mean. Um, and we've had connectivity of some forms for a very long time. Since the nineteen nineties, General Motors offered OnStar service, which basically is if you're in a crash, it'll phone home. You can press a button in the car, it's got cellphone connectivity to people at General Motors and the control center who can, um, provide other kinds of information. We have electronic toll collection, which is a type of connectivity. We have in-vehicle internet, which is branded as a connected car. So you can, um, have a wifi within your vehicle, hopefully for the passengers, not the drivers. We of course have traffic speed information, satellite navigation, GPS types of systems. Um, there's the potential to have information about the road condition ahead. And so we see lots of videos from companies saying, you know, showing how one car detects an ice patch and then broadcast that information either to a control center who then broadcasts it out to other vehicles or directly between vehicles that there's an ice patch ahead. Um, I was teaching at the University of Minnesota for many years, which is a notably cold climate. Um, this didn't impress me very much because there was always an ice patch ahead. And so you sort of, it's, it's not a rare occurrence, but might be useful information. Um, talking between infrastructure signs, signals and markings to the vehicle, so the vehicle electronically knows where these things are rather than having to use a camera to detect where they are. Broadcast of traffic signal timing. Um, we already have remote upgrading of vehicle software, Tesla's been doing this for years. Um, real-time platooning of vehicles so that they follow each other at very close headways and are taking their queue. And if the vehicle up ahead at the front of the platoon breaks, that information is automatically transmitted almost instantaneously to the back of the queue. And then real-time negotiated control, right? So two vehicles are coming towards an intersection and one is, they negotiate with each other, one of them will accelerate, the other decelerate, so they can pass without stopping. And that sounds like a great idea and you see thousands of videos that prom- promise that. But in practice, the question is, do you trust the communications? And if you trust the communications perfectly, well, that's fine. But if you don't trust the communications perfectly, you're relying on the onboard vehicle sensors in any case to make any of these kinds of decisions about real-time negotiated control, real-time platooning, understanding what the traffic signal is, do you trust the traffic lights telling you what it is? Or are you going to confirm that with your own eyes, your own cameras? Um, and similarly, infrastructure signs, these things can be spoofed. So if you're going to rely on autonomy anyway, the connectivity doesn't matter very much. And I think that's an important point, which a lot of people tend to forget. We have changes due to the sharing economy and mobility as a service. And we've seen this with shared bikes, um, which were first docked, but had later become dockless. Um, and these became a minor plague across Sydney because they weren't used very well in Sydney at least. Um, people would throw them into trees or into creeks, um, they'd be strewn about sidewalks. Because the companies that were selling them or were promoting this as a service were just basically dumping them and then hoping people would use their app to take them and put them somewhere useful. Um, it didn't work out very well, most of them went unused most of the time. But globally, bike-sharing systems have continued to grow, and now with e-bikes, there's a new opportunity. Um, we have car sharing, and the car sharing's been sort of on the downward side. Car2Go is now Car2Gone, it has left the US market. Um, and car showing, car-sharing growth began to peak as early as twenty fifteen. And it's not because car sharing is not a useful thing perhaps, um, but it's because we have um, Lyft and Uber and other types of services that are, have been growing enormously. And so why, um, pay for a car for an indeterminate amount of time in advance and have to travel to the car when a taxi can come to you on demand? Um, and we can see that there's been a huge uptick in, um, over the long term, people's valuation of Uber and Lyft. Although since they've gone public, their value has dropped. Um, they're still very valuable companies and, um, this might be the future, is still to be seen. Um, but they're all losing money right now, and that's, I think, a key problem for them because you can't lose money forever. And the question is, how long before people expect them to be profitable? And then can they be profitable, um, because they would then have to increase their, their fares, um, the taxi, the taxi Because they would then have to increase their, their fares, the taxi, the taxi charges. And if they increase the taxi charges, the demand will fall. Is there an equilibrium point here? It hasn't been established. Now, certainly there will be one if automated vehicles come on board and they can lose the labor cost. But that isn't happening today. And can these companies hold out for five more years? But this idea of cloud commuting, which we can think about towards the future, where we have fleet organized vehicles, instead of owning your own vehicle, it's automated, it's electrified, has low costs, no labor costs involved. It's electrified, so the vehicle capital and maintenance costs are lower. It's a modern fleet because it's used more intensively and therefore can turn over more frequently. And it should be smaller than the existing fleet of cars that's privately owned, that's sitting in people's garages or in parking spaces in front of their homes or in parking lots, waiting to be used because this fleet will be kept in motion more often. So we need fewer vehicles overall. Can be used in a lot of different ways. And we can imagine either a per-trip or a subscription payment. And this is going to have kind, different kinds of effects on street design because we're not going to need to use curbs for parking. We'll need to use curbs for boarding and alighting passengers. And people could potentially do this for all of their trips if they live in a dense enough urban environment. And it doesn't necessarily need to be a central city either. I mean, in a rural environment, people certainly want to own their own vehicles because they don't want to have to wait a very long time for a shared vehicle to come to their rural abode. But in an urban area where the wait time is already down to a couple of minutes with Uber potentially now. And if everyone were doing it, it would be down to seconds. This will be faster than owning your own car and going to a car and starting it up. So this is going to change how we use transport. But we should also think about vehicle forms. Okay, this is the so-called Google Card that they were promoting a few years ago. It's not what they built for mass production. There's other vehicles, single-seat vehicles. And the advantage of the single-seat vehicles, it's right-sized for the demand. Generally, we're moving one person from an origin to a destination. We're not moving six people from an origin to a destination. We don't need to move cars that are designed to move six people. We can save those cars for the specific trips where they're required. So all sorts of different types of potential vehicles that have been proposed. But you can think about something like this, the Toyota iRoad and imagine this is automated. It's already electrified, single-passenger vehicle. And this has its antecedents. General Motors was working on the same idea in the 1970s, but they never got it to production. A device they called the lean machine, both lean because it was skinny and lean because it leaned going around corners. Basically a three-wheeled motorcycle. Or an electric mopeds with rechargeable batteries. Where you can swap the battery in and out at a, at a drop-off point. And if you can get a single-passenger vehicle, you can double the capacity of your roadway, right? Simple math. If you can fit two vehicles in the space that you could use to only fit one vehicle, then you've doubled your capacity. Leave aside the willingness of vehicles to follow each other at closer distances. You could perhaps do better than that because if these vehicles are automated, you probably have the room for three or four of these vehicles in the space of a single lane. But you might have some vehicles that are bigger, and this is probably a joke, but the Toyota swagger, where people might be playing soccer inside of the vehicle as they're moving around. And you may have seen some of these single-wheeled vehicles around. So, you know, this takes up even less space than a bicycle or an e-bike. So we've got e-bikes. They're exploding in popularity. It's the most popular electric vehicle that's out there. So we're going to have all sorts of alternative vehicles and alternative highways as we can start to split lanes more effectively and use our capacity in a much more efficient way. So the problem of traffic doesn't necessarily go away because there's fewer cars traveling. It's because the cars are smaller, they're right-sized and capacity is reallocated. But of course, it might go away because there's less demand as well. We've had lots of changes in the delivery context. And I won't go through all of these, but everyone's aware of this. So if people aren't going shopping, stuff comes to them. Well, if it's just somebody driving to your house and then going back, that's not very efficient. But if they're doing multiple drop-offs along the way, that's a significant improvement. We have changes in land use. We can think about saves versus paves. Shared autonomous electric vehicles versus privately-owned autonomous electric vehicles. They have different consequences. But all of those might result in, we, we can't really anticipate how much additional travel there'll be. There's been lots of simulation studies, lots of speculation. But there's different kinds of effects going on in parallel and we don't know which of these are going to be dominant. We do know that we can adapt the built environment. So where we used to store cars, we can now do something better with that space. Where we used to refuel cars, we can now do something better with that space. Where we had excess space for the movement of cars, we can now do something better with that space. So the key is, we don't know how it plays out yet. It's an empirical question. There's a lot of things going on, things are being pulled in multiple directions. Theory is insufficient to know that. We can also look at how we reallocate between cars and other modes. It's clear, most roads are underused, underused most of the time. Outside of the peak, there's ample capacity in most places. Most pavement is, is unused even at peak times because cars, because of human drivers, cars require wa, large gaps between other, other cars. So that when they sway a little bit, they don't constantly collide. Most seats in most cars are unoccupied most of the time. Most cars are far too heavy to do what they need to actually do. Most roads are so wide, we use them for storage of vehicles rather than the movement of vehicles. And we're wasting a lot of time at traffic lights, especially in off-peak periods. So we've got dimensions of vehicle width, lane width, vehicle weight, vehicle occupancy, traffic signals and stop signs, all of which need to be optimized. And something that's a, a big issue in the United States and Australia and the UK, less so in places that have already gone through this and have a widespread network of bicycling is, how do we convert road space from the use by automobiles to uses by bicycles and so on? And we can start to adopt something like the Kubler-Ross model to understand this. Think about it as a model of grief. But it's grief fed by the motorists seeing the loss of their space and the decline of their, of their metal box. And most places are in denial. They don't think this kind of change should happen or is going to happen. But then you get anger and you have a war on bikes. And then eventually you get to bargaining, people are trying to negotiate and do a little bit in order to avoid having to do more. Then eventually becomes depression and acceptance. And in acceptance, you have a bicycle-oriented community. Not that way most, in most of the United States. We can do a lot with temporary things like plastics and paint and plasticity. But ultimately, we need to be thinking about more permanent infrastructure. We can look at pricing. And electrification is going to have huge impacts on the number of vehicles paying the fuel tax because the more vehicles that are electrified, the fewer that pay the fuel tax. And if you rely on the fuel tax for funding your roads, as is done in the United States, if half of the people are using electric vehicles and only half of the people are using internal combustion engine vehicles, the fuel tax would have to double in order to recover the same amount of revenue. And if 10% of the people are using internal combustion engines and 90% of the people are using electric vehicles, then the fuel tax would have to go up tenfold. And that's a positive feedback loop, which is going to drive people more and more towards electrification. Although places are now looking at enter, implementing electric vehicle charges. And we can use road pricing not just to fund roads, but to manage traffic. And this is really, it's brilliance, is charging more in the peak hour so that people load balance across the day. And this is something we can do once we have a systematic pricing effect in, in, in place. Now, really only Singapore does this citywide. There's a few places that do have cordons around downtown, but they're not really time varying in the way that we would like as economists to do this. But getting to a replacement probably requires putting in-vehicle charging devices into electric vehicles, which don't pay fuel taxes and autonomous vehicles, which might be driving around with any, without any passengers at all. And we don't really want to encourage that as a way of avoiding parking charges. So we're going to have to start charging for other vehicles. And this is beginning to happen now, and this will become widespread through the decade. So the question is, how do we get the gains of automobility without the costs? And why is all this change coming from the outside, the, the sector instead of the inside? I think these are things we should be thinking about. Departments of Transportation are followers, not leaders here. Our general implication is that we get an increased throughput per square meter of pavement with autom, with automation, along with really flattened demand. There's only so much travel that people can do, at least only so much time people can spend traveling because they have other things to do. Indicates we need less pavement. Now, there's opportunities. And this is, for those of you who are students or young in your career, think about the idea of traffic programming, not traffic engineering, not computer programming. But what we're trying to do is develop algorithms for cooperative behavior among autonomous unconnected vehicles. Okay, so right now, to the extent we have autonomous vehicles, they're selfish. Okay, they're trying to prevent themselves from crashing, which makes a lot of sense. And they're trying to minimize the travel time for their own passengers, which also makes sense. But they're not concerned about the implications they have on congestion for other travelers or the safety of other travelers. So today we have traffic engineers who design infrastructure or time traffic signals and place signs and, and traffic markings to improve the efficiency of moving cars. They should be trying to improve the efficiency of moving people, but they focus, they tend to focus on cars. We have transport planners who identify where infrastructure should go. We have highway engineers who look at the alignment of roads and, and basically say physically in space, where do these vertical and horizontal curves take place? And these have to be designed for human drivers at a given speed. They can't, they're not designed for autonomous vehicles. So we have to have gentler curves and autonomous vehicle would be able to do. And we have potentially shallower cur, vertical curves than we would be able to do if we have the power of an electric vehicle. And so we want to move towards a paradigm of traffic programming, where we look at the implications on the efficiency of traffic as a whole, not just on the individual's vehicle and ensuring that that's safe. No one is doing that right now. So this is an emerging profession potentially. We need to consider the environment around the vehicle and how to react to it. We need to design algorithms to control vehicles in real time for the benefit of travelers collectively, while still ensuring safety for the vehicle and its occupants. And we can incentivize this safe behavior, either with rules, if we can get all the vehicles to implement these rules or with prices that are appropriately set to encourage the kind of behavior that we want and discourage the kind of behavior we don't want. And so with that, I'll say that transport is interesting again, and I will stop the presentation.
David, thank you very much indeed for a super insightful talk. We have some questions. Actually, the first one, if I, if I, if I may, comes from Wilfred Wunderlich. Thank you for the interesting presentation. How is the forecast for modal split, especially rail transport in cities?
In 2019, I would have said rail transport will probably do okay, given that people are still going to work in cities. In 2020, I mean, I'm probably rethinking that. I mean, I, I've been a proponent of work from home and I've been sort of projecting that this was takeoff. I didn't expect it would go quite so high so rapidly. And so now I'm sort of the feeling that the central cities will, will not fully recover from 2019, from 2020. Okay, that, that's, they're not going to be as bad as they were this year, but they're not going to be what they were in 2019. People have found new ways of doing things. And those new ways, at least some of them are better than the old ways and will stick. And that's going to hurt rail transit the most because rail transit is designed precisely for the central city. Now, I thought buses were in trouble for a while because buses are an inferior mode of travel. Most people, if they would, if they can avoid a bus, if they have the income and convenience to avoid a bus, will tend to do that. And so if you have a low-volume bus route that gets replaced by shared taxi types of services or something like that. And I think public transit as a whole is, is just not going to be what it was. In, in 25 years is not going to be what it was. Certainly not what it was at its peak in 1923, but not even what it was last year.
Thank you. From Alexandra Grusha, I have, thank you for your insights about the traffic future. We can already see that COVID pandemic has changed our travel habits and as a consequence, traffic patterns faster than we ever expected. Could you please comment on how this current situation will speed up the process and ending changing the traffic?
So the public transit stuff we've talked about. I think the next thing that it, it has a huge effect on is the logistics and supply chain and how we get our goods. Okay, so people have become much more comfortable with delivery of goods. And we've done very little to optimize this so far. Not to say that there aren't people working on doing it, but if you look at how are goods delivered and you look at how the grocery stores chains are, are delivering food to people in particular, they're, they're giving deliveries, but they're not doing this in a very efficient way quite yet. And so there's a lot to work on that. But as it gets more efficient and as it gets less expensive, then we of course will expect to see it rise as a share of the amount of how goods come to us. The problem becomes, and this is sort of the classic problem in, in transport. People travel not just to get places, people travel to get out of places. And one of the places they want to get out of is home, right? So we have this idea called a travel time budget. And the idea of the travel time budget is that through a long period of, of measured history, people tend to spend an hour to 90 minutes a day traveling outside of the home. Now, when they were walking back in the pre-automobile times, they would walk 30 minutes to someplace and back again to work, to town or whatever. And then with streetcars, they would go a longer distance, but would still be about an hour a day. And then with the automobile, of course, they could go a much longer distance because the automobile was faster and roads, the road, the automobile highway system was much faster. And now we've got a situation where they don't want to, people don't want to go to work, but they're working from home and they still need to get out of the house. So we're going to probably have more recreational travel. And this recreational travel might be walking and biking. So people taking an hour walk during their lunch break or going out at 10:00 AM. You know, they've done a few hours of work, they'll leave their home office and going out and coming back. Now, sort of keep in mind that office workers are probably only half of all workers. I mean, those of us who are in the class of people who move bits for a living, sort of imagine everybody is in the class of people who move bits for a living. But half of the people have physically located jobs that really can't be moved. If you're, you know, a police officer, you can't really phone it in. If you're a nurse, you know, we talk about telemedicine, but you know, we, we have a lot of people in this world who really physically have to be located. Now, information technology will change some of that. So, you know, we'd expect it over time to be higher. But I, I would expect to see some type of travel. But if it's not automobile travel going into the central city during peak times and most of the central city workers are office workers, that's an important change and that really has consequences on traffic. So I would expect to see the continued uptick of walking and bicycling, especially e-bikes as a mode of travel. E-bikes enabling people to go to work without using public transit, but also enabling people to do this in a recreational way or go, go somewhere to find some activity to engage in, to get coffee or something, to visit parks, that kind of thing.
Very nice. Thank you, David. Actually, I have a very quick question, which I'll throw in. When you talked about traffic programming and also when you just mentioned that people haven't really tackled the logistics sector yet, especially in this forum of NERIPS and also with an eye on reinforcement learning, do you expect traffic programming, that you said could be a profession, to be handcrafted rules? Or complex rules arising out of essentially world simulations that then need to be verified in the wild?
I'm, my bias is towards thinking of them as scientifically derived types of rules more than neural network types of, big data types of generated rules. But I'm happy to be proved wrong. Okay, so, but I think that we need to sort of, I think we need to combine the best of understanding the physics and then maybe using the big data to estimate the parameters. But I think we're getting into real dangerous territory if we don't understand the traffic physics that we're trying to, to model.
Very nice. Thank you. And I have a question from Ivan Kock. Will we see cyclists being banned from roads, from the road, once all vehicles are made autonomous?
I hope not. I, I mean, pedestrians, I mean, you've seen some discussion of this by the people in the AV community. Pedestrians and bicyclists are a problem, so therefore Pedestrians and bicyclists are problems, so therefore we should ban them. Which is, well, you know, cars are a problem, therefore we should ban cars, which I think is a more saleable point. I think in. The better thinking cities, Paris is an example. Automobiles are going to be prohibited from the central city because there's so many bicyclists and pedestrians around. Now, what we do need to do is have protected bicycle facilities so that they're on on roads that have a lot of traffic. Bicyclists and cars aren't mixing very much, but cars have to be. Smart enough and moral enough to respect that. Pedestrians and bicyclists and people who aren't in metal boxes and are therefore not as protected. Need to be protected more than the occupants of their own car, the occupants of other car. Who have all the safety gear around them. So I I think it's, it's an ethical decision. But I think most central cities are going to. Opt in favor of pedestrians and bicyclists over time, certainly European cities. And the center, the centers of American and Australian and Asian cities. Now, this is going to be location specific, right? So you could sort of see in a higher speed environment, you don't want bicyclists and pedestrians on freeways and they're already banned. The question is, are other roads converted into being freeway like or are they converted into being street like? And we've made a lot of major mistakes in our urban design and the, one of the most important is confusing streets for roads. And streets are urban environments where there's people around and roads are longer distance environment, you know, rural. Longer distance where you don't expect to find passengers or people on the street and bicycles on the seat, street. And so that's, I think. An important aspect of how we redesign our roads going forward. But yeah, I would hope that we're not banning bicyclists uniformly.
Very nice. Quick question from Michael Macrides. Do you think that public authorities, cities, DOT and countries? Will have an active role towards traffic management, control, coordination and so on? Or do you see this process coming from the evolution in vehicle technologies manufacturers vision? Who's running our cities in the future?
So right now, the infrastructure is managed by. Public agencies, by technocrats in public agencies. Designing algorithms for traffic signal control and. Rules for how wide roads need to be and level of service standards. And they accept the vehicles as whatever they are. And the vehicles are designed by manufacturers and they accept the roads as whatever they are. And this has been that way for ages. And I suspect it will continue to be that way and you'll basically. Not have a lot of coordination between the two and as long as you have. An environment where there's an, certainly where there's a mixed environment, you've got infrastructure. That's going to have to be centrally controlled because not all the vehicles will be automated. And that's going to be the way it is for at least twenty five years, you know, and maybe. In the twenty forties, when you start to phase out human driven vehicles. You can start to do more with automation, but until you've done that. You're really going to have to be designing for the least common denominator, which is a human driven vehicle.
Very nice. I can tell you, David, that your talk has generated a lot of interest. So we get a lot of questions. I'm not sure we have time for all of them, I'm afraid. I'll pick some out randomly. I see one from David Yonitz. It's team said at the moment, test drives and data collection for AV are biased towards certain countries or world regions. Given the high cost of collecting these data. Do you think it could become unprofitable in the long term to introduce level four or five AV in other regions?
I think it becomes more profitable over time. I mean, they're starting in the, I mean, if you look at where. Waymo's main first test bed is, it's in suburban Arizona. And it's in suburban Arizona for a reason because the roads are wide, the weather is good. People can see long distances, the traffic is relatively light. And so that's an easy environment. And if it can't work there, it isn't going to work anywhere else. And they're going to be go into progressively more complicated environments. And the US environment is generally simpler than a European environment. And certainly a US suburb is simpler than a European central city. So I I think there's going to be spatial inequities with the deployment of this. As there is with everything, in some places we'll get it before others. I don't think that means it's going to be unprofitable to deploy level four. I just think it's a harder problem to deploy level four. In a complex urban environment where you've got lots of pedestrians and bicyclists. Who are going to behave in much less predictable ways than automobiles do. And you know, that, that just means that those areas are going to be level four much later than. Freeways and suburban roads, and that's the nature of things. I don't know if I answered the question, but that's.
I think. Very nice. So thank you very much, David. We have more questions. If you don't mind, I will email them to you. And maybe also the people can can get in touch with you. It was an amazing talk. Thank you very much indeed. Really enjoyed it.
All right. Have luck with the rest of your conference. I think I'm going to go to sleep soon.
Okay, okay, thank you. So for people, yeah, David joined us from Sydney. Thank you. So designing and running a competition like traffic forecast takes a lot of work and ingenuity in its design. Our next speaker was at the heart of this effort. He's my ingenious colleague at here technologies and also a member of IRA Scientific Advisory Board, Moritz Neun. He will give an introduction to the traffic forecast competition design and the data. Moritz, I yield the floor to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Good morning, good afternoon, good, good night. Everybody, next I should maybe go to the first slide to get started. Happy to give you a bit more in depth view on how the design and the data for the traffic forecast competition worked out. That collaboration between IRA and and here. What motivations were and and how we did actually think about and and perform, perform the preparation of of the data. Think on the motivation and that was already partially mentioned also by by previous presentations, especially by. The motivation on. Actually running the next iteration of the forecast, twenty twenty edition. Is that we really. That we are really having some some learnings from the first one and we're doubling down on on. New questions and and adding new data to support these questions. For example. How can we support the learnings or the understanding of these traffic flows with additional? Static or layers describing, describing the the physical space. But the the road network traffic is flowing in or. Points of interest which which are influencing basically. What what traffic, what traffic is doing and how it is evolving again. Also, more questions on what reasonable metrics actually we can use for assessing the qualities of of the metrics. And and very importantly also that whether we can actually. Not not only learn like predicting. The city, the city as a whole, but in a, in a, you know. Like city specific way, but whether we can actually also learn like the. The idiosyncratic joint tools, which which are generally valid and not only valid in one particular city. So can we transfer, learn actually this this movement and this, this effects? And also, and that was also already. Commented on and 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 started with the relationships of traffic. With other specially distributed effects and and. Processes in the end. And I think all these questions together, they they belong into the area of of. Also helping us to find sustainable ways of transport and improving. Traffic in 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 general. I think, and and that's another motivation or also referring to to those joint learnings and and. Several effects, several effects we've already seen, also this year with the with the side competition on air pollution. There's, there's definitely a pretty direct link between like the what one could call the traffic weather and. General weather or air pollution and and other geospatial effects or also climatological effects. Coming, coming a bit more to to what we did and 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 why we're actually talking about open movies. Traditionally, traffic is detected and like modeled on a on a curling basis. The typical input are GPS, GPS pipes, so data collected from from the moving entities mostly from from the cars obviously. And they need to be mapped. Also called matched onto the the most likely old segment there that I'm at at the moment. And then the the speed and the congestion rate for for that for that area basically are computed as function of. The pops on that individual segments, maybe with some some inflows, outflows, but generally, this is, this is the logic. And this obviously, this needs a very good and accurate road network. So that influences the matching quality also influences all the other side effects. The the matching as in in GPS, they can actually add up quite quite significantly and and also make many. Many of the input data sources unusable or or not really. Influencing or informing, informing the traffic prediction. This especially can can be like like second order effects or in in the in the drawing here, we see like a few purple dots. Maybe that would be a shopping mall or a football stadium, which doesn't have an immediate. Effect, it cannot be matched to the the road segment next to it, but actually it can have a very significant impact at. The traffic in a very short near term future anyway. And step already demonstrated or showed showed that example of of pop movies as well. I think we can be, we can be seeing traffic and that in a way damn simple aggregation of. Moving, moving points into into movies. That actually yields a lot of, a lot of information and on the way forward. Already now with this, with this competitions. I think we can add a lot more and and make that more challenging, but also more more interesting. So let's, let's deep dive a bit into the the data making of. In twenty twenty and this year's competition, we have been evolving the dynamic layer. Last year, we were seeing those three channels. Especially the the encoding of the heading was was causing some some headaches and and. So we try to improve that, we also adding a new layer about events incidence on the on the traffic. And we also have this new static layers which which hopefully help to inform, informed understanding and and the prediction capabilities. I will go a bit more in detail now in the in the next few minutes. On the dynamic layers. First of all, of course, we are getting the GPS pipes as as or pipes and we somehow. We aggregating them into into a pixel space. The pixel size is is point oh one decrease. That's a grid which, yeah, was in the beginning was actually chosen pretty almost arbitrarily. But actually has more and more proof to be a good, good way of of capturing and aggregating. On the one hand. These cells, depending on where you are exactly on the world there. Between ninety and one hundred eleven meters in in size and anyway. There, there big enough to capture multiple pops usually right now. Of course, always depending on the volume of of traffic along a road, but. Usually getting not only a single reading, but you're getting multiple readings and that. In a five minute, in a five minute time, time slot. And very importantly also, and this, of course, this is a more and more important aspect. We have to think about how to preserve privacy and and there with having multiple readings, we can guarantee a certain level of of privacy. So that that makes also the sharing like like now we're doing in the in the competition. That makes that that data sharing much, much easier. On the other hand, these cells are also small enough to usually cover only a single city block, a single. Quarter or something like that in 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 the whole network. Or or not too many, not too many complex junctions as well. And they're also avoiding to bridging larger obstacles in a sense, which which could be parks or rivers or something where where also like. Some. Like not so easy to to understand effects might be, might be happening if if there's no knowledge about that, about that object. So looking, looking at that a bit more. More concretely. I I just do here a few, a few cell examples on the left hand side a bit more complex. Situation on the right hand side with an easier still both are in 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 a city. In the left hand side, you really you can see in the cells we have, we have quite a few. Relatively complex junctions, we have, we have roads with multiple lanes. We have like side tracks with probably a lot more like parking lots. We're having one way roads and and we're having other complex junctions with. Also irregular shapes. On the, on the right hand side a bit more regular. Like a normal two way road here or like one way road here and and significantly fewer. Road segments basically in in a, in a single cell. And of course, you can go to the extreme where especially on a like. More, less dense, dense area where you might have only a single road. Slightly on at the corner going through a cell, so all that is 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 possible, possible effects and how and how. Such a cell might be looking, looking like and. If we then. Taking all the pipes which fall into into such a cell and we're just aggregating. That into a five minute frame, so taking all, all the GPS signals we're getting in in five minutes. And aggregating them into into those those one hundred meter cells. Of course, we need to somehow think about how to encode. Of course, the volume is a relatively easy, easy channel in that sense. Speed already has has more properties to it, like usually the the average speed is a is is a good, good signal. And then we're also having something like information about about the dominant heading directions and. In the last year, in the twenty nineteen edition of of traffic forecast. Also because of that proximity to to image or to to movies in that sense, we 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 went on with. RGB, so with the three channel model, having the volume, the average speed and the main heading. Encoded in in these three channels and then basically with five minute time slots, time bins. We we are actually at a tensor having two hundred eighty eight. Time, time bins, the the height and width are basically just the size of the the bounding box. Of the of the city we chose and then we're just having three channels. Now, as as I said earlier. The the heading especially is is something where like a main heading direction is not. Not yielding a lot of information, so we tried this year with the H channel encoding. To give away a bit more finer grain information about the heading and here the the channel idea was to. To still use like the four quadrants, north west, north east, south west, south east. But for each of these four basically have the volume and the average speed and separation. So this, this gives us a bit more information and as you can see like in the, in the table here. Just some some examples, this is in a sense, of course, a sparse methods here, a percentage that's as as gross. Where in in the first time bin, we are basically seeing like all all quadrants having. Having some information. Sorry, I'm here, all quarters have having some information. Where like that's definitely some 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 main road with with larger volumes. Going, going in in the north west and south east, but we also seeing some some vehicles in in. In the, in the other directions and then in the in the time slot afterwards, we are no longer seeing. And then in the in the time slot afterwards, we are no longer seeing seeing these additional, but only like the the main directions actually seeing seeing some data, seeing some some data here. Next, so more concretely, coming back to that to that example view here, what's what's in a cell? So we are we are seeing here like main road with with multiple lanes. That's that's probably a traffic jam jam in in front of the the traffic lights. That's definitely some 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 pipes which we are getting here with basically higher volume, lower speed. Maybe we're seeing some vehicle in the in in the in the one way road at the at the side, which which is not necessarily having any traffic jam, so that might basically have have a green color encoding. If you you think about red, yellow and green, which we didn't display here. Whereas like, so this direction would be a north northwest heading here with with a high volume and a low speed. Whereas on 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 the on the northeast here, we're having more like a mixed and hence a higher higher average speed, maybe also with a with a high volume. On the right hand side, we have a smaller situation, but but still like you can also see like the the north north east in that example here might have lower lower average speed and and higher higher volume basically than what we've seen here with the with the northwest, the yellow one where where the speed in that that case obviously would be would be would be bigger. So with that new encoding, we are now not having anymore like a nice RGB movie, but we're having a multi-channel movie basically out of the out of the pop data. We're now having eight channels, so the tensor is now has has gone still the two hundred eighty eight time bins basically, but now we're having we're having eight eight channels in that in that example. And now we added we added one new, the ninth channel basically to the dynamic layer. So this is again still a dynamic source where we can really have like every five minutes bin, where we can have some some information. For that channel, we actually used the the traffic from the here traffic API, the incident data. Incident data is a is a feed which which contains information about accidents, reported congestion, road hazards, construction sites, or some some weather, other and other effects which are influencing basically the traffic and they they can be some of them can be like short term events, like an accident will be reported maybe a few minutes to maybe an hour or so depending on how long it takes to also clear clear the site. Whereas like a a construction site might be there for a few hours even to a couple of weeks or months. And and basically this is these are long term events, but all of them are are available like in in every visible in every of the of the five minute of the five minute bin. So what we did for this for this layer, we we mapped the different incidence type to like a a perceived general impact on what they could have on traffic. And then the incident feed also in addition comes with with criticality field, which differentiates between minor major and critical events. So this is in effect like a static multiplier to that to that mapping. And ultimately, we're then like in the five minute bin, the one hundred one 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 hundred by one hundred meter, five minute bin. We have summing up the different static values in that sense of the different events. And we're capping that at two fifty five. So that means like, for example, a single accident which is stored as as critical, might already easily get up to some number in the two hundred forty. Or you would have multiple less critical events which are also giving a a high value in that in that in that incident severity mapping basically. So with with all that together, we now have compared to the the last year, not not three channels, but we're having nine channels that give some information. The eight channels are are encoding the proper information and they were also then asked to be predicted. The ninth channel that that incident channel is is more like an informing informing the prediction, but it's it's a side side input in in that sense. In addition, as already mentioned previously, we also published a couple of static layers. So the static layers that don't have a temporal fashion, so that that's basically just a single a single view on 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 the study area on the on the prediction area. One information piece which we thought might be might be interesting because it's especially in in like longer term prediction might might give give information about certain properties of 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 certain areas. And for that one, we we used the points of interest, the here places data which contains everything from from restaurants, bars, entertainment facilities, but also hospitals, parking lots, shopping, transport facilities like train stations or 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 bus bus stops and and all that. And out of out of that data, we basically we derived heat maps for for five scopes of 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 major categories. Some like eating and drinking, restaurants and bars, which which would probably also have some 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 daily patterns and 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 some other patterns in 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 them. Hospitals as a as a critical facility in that sense, parking of course have a have a significant impact on 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 traffic. Shopping as well, similar to to maybe restaurants in a sense, but with with different different patterns and different properties. And ultimately also like transport facilities, as I said, train stations, bus terminals, which which also are in a in a way hubs for transportation where also more changes are happening and hence are influencing the the traffic. So here you can just see a very rough example of of hospital heat map. Of course, hospitals are usually not too much clustered hence the heat is not that big, but there's the information whether it's either there's hospital or not. And and you can see that's that's actually quite a bit of quite a bit of data, therefore example here in 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 Moscow here. And the other, so the previous like the PUI heat maps actually that resulted in five in five channels for these different for these different PUI categories. And then in addition, we we provided two channels to give some information about the road network topology. And here the idea was to take these, since we we're looking at the cells and looking at the 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 old network underneath, the the easy metrics to to get here is basically the the number of segments and the the cardinality of the different junctions which we are seeing here. And so by cardinality of of junction, basically we're meaning how many segments are going into into one junction. So it could be two, it's it's not a junction, right? But but three, three as a junction and the complex junction might have up to seven connecting roads to a single single junction. So that you can also see in the in the in the first channel, that cardinality is basically kept by at seven, which is usually the maximum which we see in our data. And then we we are actually getting information about some some hint about the complexity of of junctions and that and that specifics. And then in addition, we wanted also to to inform about the type of roads and these junctions. So it probably makes a difference if there's this some some residential roads with a high cardinality as opposed to like a main road or even a highway junction with a high cardinality. So then the the second channel tried to do like a bitwise encoding of the of the some of of main main classes, main road functionality classes by by the by the junction count. So this was the two additional static channels and that was also maybe a bit a response to some of the competitors in in last year trying to to use fully fledged road networks overlay them with the with the with the pop data. Here we try to give a simplified representation and and to to inform inform also some some learning about about actual movement or topology patterns in 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 the traffic. Okay, if we look at the output, our three main cities like in in the in the previous year, we are looking left left side at Berlin, in the middle at Istanbul and on the right side at at Moscow. And we also chose them on the one hand because of we had we had good data also from from different vehicle and provider types. And especially also because they had very different topologies. You can see Berlin with a with quite irregular shape and and also dance in a city in Istanbul like the on the one hand, of course, the city has a different shape. It has it has the big bridges and like a big natural obstacle in 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 the middle of the city, which which definitely will have some influence on on traffic. And on on the right hand side, we have that very nice almost perfectly circular shape of 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 the Moscow road network. How did we get to the data very, very briefly? We like like in the in the in the previous one, we are we are using Apache drill for creating our our pop data. The pop data is stored in in park files, so that allows us really to very efficient and very quickly for most of the most of the operations actually just using plain SQL and and standard coping functions to to derive this with with some some help of user defined functions to derive this. These tile bins, this one hundred meter kritzer sizes also applying capping filtering out bad data and outputting it again as as park care. So that's the native native file format we're using for the for the 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 heavy, the heavy workload, the heavy lifting. And then we're just concatenating the two hundred eighty eight frames per day and and outputting them as as HD five format, which is a nice sparse grid presentation. And on the data provisioning, as already mentioned, HD five was was chosen because of of the the space effectiveness of especially with with sparse data and the availability of 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 loaders for different environments. We have the static layer files with with the seven channels and all we made all cities in in four hundred ninety five times four hundred thirty six pixels. So that was the the study area, we made them made them the same. The training set with the dynamic layers contained half years, so the first half of twenty nineteen with the two hundred eighty eight time bins, five minutes for full day. Again, the same size height and width and with the nine dynamic layers. And then there were of course like some validation sets, eighteen full days in the same format. And the the challenge was to to predict, make five hundred predictions in in spread over one hundred sixty three days, so in in the other half of the year. And with with using MSE as 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 the 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 metric to evaluate that. And like unlike like last year, here only the prediction was about the the eight channels and the nine channels, the nine channels with the incidents that we didn't ask to be predicted. And in addition, the prediction horizon was going from basically five minutes to sixty minutes into the future. So in total six time points. Just very brief outlook, the hochreiter already gave lots of ideas and I think that's that's more and more coming and looking actually forward to to thinking about next year's challenge and to to finding more data. Definitely, I think this year's COVID crisis gives us a lot of of data also changing changing data and a lot of interesting things to do here. I also believe that other transport modes, multiple transport active active mobility modes like pedestrians or cycling, which have their own hidden biases would be an interesting source. And we're actively seeking for for that kind of data. There also might be that we that we could be using other other sources, not only the GPS, the GPS signals or moving points, but maybe also satellite. Depending on availability or webcam or dash cam imagery, which give us some information. Or maybe just some calibration information about about the the volumes. There's still like enough questions around understanding this passness and and coverage limitations of 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 that credit approach. Weather so far has been seen mostly as like influencing influencing the traffic, but but maybe that's also more directly also information and and applicability for 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 weather tasks. Outputting of different outputs at the moment, the output is is basically the same format as the input. I think that could also be, that could be new new ideas and 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 problems here. And finally, and in the previous presentation by David Levinson, we also heard already ideas about public space, city planning. Think that's that's huge debate and usage and and occupation of of public space. So there's definitely also interesting, interesting questions and and data to be used in on the way forward.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you very, very much indeed. And yeah, as as everyone can see, there is a lot of work involved on the data side, which sometimes yeah gets gets lost once this this movie is out. Or it says one, what I would call bull's eye question out there, it's from Anastasius Cuvelas, and he basically says, if I argue that the dynamic data is enough to make my predictions, then I and I don't need the static data, they don't add any information. He's essentially asking whether that comment would be just and whether one could quantify that. I think you will agree more, and that was actually one question we asked ourselves. That's why we added that channel. So Anastasius, I don't believe we have a completely quantitative answer yet. Maybe the next few participants, the winners can comment. We will actually get a quantitative answer, I can assure you. I think early indications would suggest your hunch that it's maybe not that useful, but I stand to be proven corrected. So thank you again, Moritz, that was that was amazing. Our next speaker is in fact the winner of traffic forecast twenty twenty. What makes that quite extraordinary is that he's a team of one. And what makes it also extraordinary is that he also won last year's competition. He evolved his approach, which he published after last year's competition to this year's data and added some nice new features and ingenious features. And it's a great pleasure to yield the floor to Sung Bin Choi, our winner for this year.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you, Sung Bin.
Okay, can you see the slide?
Yes, we can.
Ah, okay, good, okay. I'm Sung Bin Choi, and now I I'm going to present my experimentation using unit for this traffic forecast challenging. So the task is about the future trapping net prediction. The data is collected from three different cities worldwide, Berlin, Istanbul and Moscow. And now we need to predict the traffic volume and traffic direction and speed for each two D trapping map image pixel. So in this slide, each square represents a five minute trapping map image. And this is my second year participation in this challenge. Our last year, given one hour trapping map, we needed to predict the next fifty minutes. This year, we need to predict the maximum one hour distant future. So as a competition participant, the the overall format of the challenging looks pretty much the same as the last year, but the test difficulty gets lightened a little bit more, I think. As we have seen from the previous presentation. As we have seen from the previous presentation, input data is composed of dynamic input and static input. Dynamic input contains information about traffic volume and speed, so it's variant to the time. And static data, they have, they are invariant to the time changes. In the trap, traffic, dynamic data for one hour, so there is twelve timeframe image. And each image has four hundred ninety five by four hundred thirty six image size and nine picture channel. So in my experimentation, the time axis is simply combined to the picture channel, so twelve multiplied by nine. And then static input feature is concatenated to the dynamic dynamic input data. So the finally, the picture channel has one hundred fifteen pictures. And I I did some initial, while I'm doing some initial experiments on these pictures, I compared the using a like only dynamic input data versus when I use the both dynamic and static data. And in my experimentation, the additional performance gain from adding static input data was very small, almost like minimal. But at least it did not hurt performance, so I ended up using it using it anyway, but I think my theory is that maybe the those information contained in static input data is already reflected to the dynamic input data. So that is my thinking. Given a two-dimensional trapping net image, now we need to predict make a prediction on each traffic map image pixel. And in these kinds of problems, UNet has been proved to be a quite an effective method. So this is a schematic view of the UNet. Each blue square represents the encoder and orange square represents decoder. For each encoder level, the image is downsampled half in size. And for each decoder level, the image is upsampled. And there was skip connections connecting between them. In this study, I tried three different model types, named the model one, two and three. And each model has a different encoder and decoder structures. Model one is actually similar to our last year's participation. And in model two and three, I modified the structure a little bit. So in the encoder, in model one, there's a bunch of convolutional layers which are connected in a feed port passion, same as the dense net. And then the image is downsampled by average pulling layer. In model two, there's a in parallel to the convolutional layers, I added max pooling layer in parallel. Then both outputs are concatenated and passed forward to the next convolutional pooling layer. In model three, the input image first go goes through the max pooling layer. And then there was a bunch of convolutional layers. And lastly, it is downsourced at the convolutional pooling layer. There is no theoretical justification about which model is better than others. And I just tried some different variations of it to find some more better performing model. In the decoder, in model one and two, the image is first upsampled in the deconvolutional layer. And then there's a convolutional layers. In model three, I attached linear interpolation layer. This is actually the libels of the average pooling layer. Does not require any additional parameter. So it is attached in parallel to the deconvolutional layer. And then there is also a convolutional layers. So we have three model types per city. So I trained three different model per city. And for each model, I chose draw arbitrarily chose multiple lines differing in only a training iteration number. And I combine those models by a simple mathematical function such as averaging and taking a median. The training loss function and the evaluation measure was mean squared error. And all of those three different base models scored range late between one point one six nine to one point one eight one. And the difference was pretty much minimal. And there was no clear winner among the three different model types. But when I combined them together using so simple less function averaging, there was very small but consistent improvement in performance. So our best performance model was achieved by by combining six prediction or three model type and point model type drawing two runs by averaging. So this is it. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Sung Bin. Very, very nice solution. And as I said, our winning solution. Are there any questions? Okay. Fantastic. Okay, well, Sung Bin, could you show me the model architecture again? Sorry about that. So could you comment on how you evolved your architecture? Obviously, the input was was different. But how you evolved your architecture from last year?
I just, there was no, no, oh, some theory.
Yep, you go.
A sound, a sound theory about which model should be better, but I, in model one, there was no max pooling layer used in model one. So I just tried them. Or maybe I can change something and they can handle some information that didn't process in other model. So they or they, in model two and three, they can make error, but they'll add a error, make different error, so they could, when combined together, they could complement each other.
Very nice, very nice idea. And did you try lots of other variants, or this was the first idea that worked for you out of the box?
This, I also tried like some other data augmentation techniques, but it didn't all work out. It performance didn't get better, so yes, this is the only thing that worked.
Very nice. Now here, I have to plead my my ignorance. I I looked at your solution last year, but I may have forgotten. Did you, at the bottom layer of the U-Network, did you modify your approach from last year? This was one bit which I found actually pretty ingenious.
Oh, last year, I I did some pre-processing like the com- converting the three channel into the more discretized port channel for each direction. But this year, the input data is already discretized called heading. So I didn't do anything. I just did some normalization like normalization only.
Okay.
Nothing more.
Understand. Did you want to share something? I didn't see your screen if you have, if you have it there, but I think it's the green button in the middle. If you wanted to share something, it worked early, but but that's good. Sung Bin, I have a question for you from, oh, cool, very nice. Very nice. I have a question for you from Anastasios Kuvellas. He he said, can you comment on the execution time and computational power? How much time you need for training in what and what resources you are using?
I used the GPU Titan X. And using that model, I I took about four or five days for each model to train.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yes.
Wow. So so you did it on a home machine? Very interesting. Okay. I have a question from Avi Avidan. Did last, did last year winning arc, sorry, did last year's winning arc was also by an ensemble of a number of various arc variants, architecture, sorry. I I think that's a sorry, I repeat the question. So last year, was your solution also based on an architecture with choose ensemble learning? I believe so, right?
Last year, I used the ensemble learning, but this year I didn't use it ensemble at all, and I just simply combined them because you to use ensemble, you need to retrain the last layer of the model. But this year, I didn't have enough computing resource and time, so I just simply worst them by averaging.
Understand. And literally, you mean, okay, you literally, that was would have been my question. You literally averaged the outputs of the three models?
Yes, that's correct.
Very nice. I love this. I have a question from David Yonitz. Thank you for the talk, Sung Bin. Do you think having weighted, maybe even learning the weights averages of the different model outputs would even improve your results?
Oh, I I tried some arbitrary weight for each model. But not many, but I tried a few, but no, this, the best model was just simple averaging with equal weight.
Right, yes, very, very nice. And so the input data, if I understood it correctly, could you run me through that again? Sorry, I didn't quite understand what you did with it.
Input data? I just burst time axis with the picture channel.
Okay.
Then the static input data feature is simply added to it, concatenated.
Understand, okay.
So all of them is used.
Understand, and you fed this in 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 one piece. And maybe for Anastasios's question earlier on, did you, do you have a hunch whether your model use the static data, or do you think maybe without the static data, you know, the output wouldn't have been worse? Did you do that analysis? Or no worries, of course, if not, but do you have a an idea maybe in inspecting the weights, does it actually use those static layers?
I said, I said the input data was used as the input in my model, but in the initial experiment, I tried only dynamic input data without static data, and the performance was pretty much similar to each other. I didn't do some comprehensive experimentation on it, but I think it's most of the static data information is redundant. It's already collected in the dynamic input data.
So Anastasios's hunch could could prove to be correct. I have a a question from Fan Yu Wu. Do you use pre-trained, do you use a pre-trained model?
No. I started from scratch.
Yep. Sorry, I was just, apologies, very nice, I have to say. Good. Any more questions, anyone? I'm I'm very surprised. So you did it on one Titan X, so you had several of those at your disposal?
You mean the computer?
Yeah.
I I have multiple computer, I have three computer.
Okay.
I tried it in pool, pools rather.
You, sorry, you tried?
I've tried in pool, how can I say? I I every resource I have.
So you had, you had your raspberry pi as well. No, very nice. I mean, I'm I'm very impressed. Any more questions, anyone? Okay, otherwise I can, I can have some. Also, if you had, and and this is sort of maybe going towards future competitions, what do you think you learned? I mean, you've seen last year's data that that we we shared. And I think there were, you know, there was one channel at the time, which was the majority heading, which a few participants found that it wasn't really helpful. This year, maybe the static data isn't really helpful. We are great fans of the notion that maybe the dynamic data is enough. But would you like to see other data that you think might actually be of help? So while you did this, did you ever think of that question? If so, we'd like to hear your answer. Of course, you don't have to have one, because that might help us design future competitions.
I actually, before I learning the experiments, I I expected the static input data will be very helpful. I I'm not domain expert in this region. So the the just was quite contrary to my expectation. So
No, no, it's good. I I actually, so, yes, so there there was, I mean, you know, it's it's not a secret, and I think we we said it several times. So there was a, the the last year's runner-up team also had a U-Network, and they spend a lot of time actually trying to fit, sort of trying to fit the road network and the movies we had, and and trying to fit more, what one would call more traditional traffic methods. And that was one of the, and and didn't succeed, didn't improve it at all. And that was one of the reasons why we designed this year's competition, actually, in doubling down on that philosophy, not knowing, very honestly, whether whether this would help. And so I like this result, and we will try maybe with all of you to establish a quantitative basis. Is it really true that it doesn't help? Because I think for me, and and I guess with Anastasios's comment, I I would like a world in actually in which the the dynamics is the most important thing, and maybe I don't need to care, and that would also open the door for transfer learning. But I think it's it's good if we could maybe for all the solutions, we have to a a small quantitative analysis. I have another question from Alabi, or I hope I pronounce your name correctly, Butch Isomor, Butch Isomo. Do you observe relearning in terms of observable decrease in MSE of validation per epoch?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said.
So it's so I guess the validation error, while you train, I mean, for how many epochs did you train, and did you see decreasing as as it should, one would hope? Or did it kind of find it right away and it didn't improve?
I I it has been about one month ago, so I don't remember it correctly. But I think I on the validation data, there was decrease in the, there was decrease observed in the loss function. But the the number of example in validation data was smaller compared to the last year. So in this year, I found that the evaluation digest from the validation data was little bit unreliable compared to the last year. So yes.
Very nice. I very much like that. Any, any last questions for Sung Bin? Nice chance. Good, then I actually think we finished five minutes early. Sung Bin, it was a pleasure to see your talk. And thank you very much for participating again and Participating again and amazing achievement to win this competition again. Fantastic. So our next speaker is Fan Yu Wu from Purdue University, representing the second place team in our competition this year. It consists of members from Purdue in the US Southeastern University. The School of Transportation in the Yang, in the Yang University in China. From Charles University of Technology, from the Department of Architecture and Civil Engineering in Sweden. He will represent the ingenious solution based on an HR net. Yan Wu, I'll yield the floor to you.
Okay, I'm a fan of Young is my, actually is my teammate, okay.
Ah, I'm sorry.
It's fine, it's fine. Okay.
Then I was completely misinformed, I apologize, so.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so now I'm trying to show my solutions. Actually, this solution is done by two of us, it's by, by me and by my teammates, Yang Liu. And the rest of the people are actually our supervisor and the committee members.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, then.
So actually introduce our teams a little bit, so me and Yang Liu are actually a famous, a famous experienced. Machine learning player, so we have, actually, we have won several competition around us and championship. And this year, actually, also attended last year's traffic forecast competition, and finally ranked fourth. Actually, we are. In the way, I see, way, way the end of the competition, like eight hours before the end, we are actually ranked third. And finally.
I remember.
Yeah, one team, just sixty-six us, and we go for. And the same thing happens again, actually, I think for this year's competition, even though maybe forty-eight hours before, we are the first. Finally, we were defeated by last year's champion.
Okay.
Things happens again, okay, it's embarrassing actually for me, so we are now happy with the results. So first, we need to introduce some highlights of our methods. Actually, we use a simple image segmentation models. Many based on HR net, we also. Do some experiments with U net, and we think that U net is not good enough for our, in our experiment, but because we just. Treat, we just use one. Type of. Unit called efficient net unit, so use a efficient net decoder. And also similar to our last year's solutions, we consider that official engineering, we also enhance the performance. And several is slightly different from last year's, our last year's solution is that we do a lot of greedy experiment to find a good training and model. Hyperparameters and components. And the last one we show, yes, we also put our GitHub links here. But first, we want, I want to introduce the. Data description and the problem definition. So the first thing that our nicer provides the three cities of Berlin, Istanbul and Moscow over a year period. And the interesting thing is that it's used.
Sorry to, sorry to interrupt, so I apologize profusely, I think your screen is not changing, so we can't see the slides moving. I thought you might want to know, maybe go out of sharing and maybe reshare?
I resume sharing, it's okay.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Now, now it works right.
So I can still see the title page, it says TLab Traffic Map Movie For.
Let me, let me not use a full screen. I think that's probably not the full screen. Now it works wrong.
Now it works, thank you.
Okay, so. It doesn't matter, okay, let's, let's go into further. Main problem, okay, so I will introduce the data description and the problem definition first, so. This year is slightly different from last year, that the data splitting is different. So last year, we have the. Training, testing and a variation set all over the year, but this year we have only the July to June for training and the. January to June for training and July to December for the variation and testing. For our solutions, we have used some leak, they leak informations, all the future, all the information, so. So this case makes us a little bit to do some fish engineering, so that's probably why you're designing this way, okay? The next one is that you think, you see, it's similar to last year's data, it's exactly the same, so we have a very large input like. Four hundred and thirty-six, ninety-six, thirty-six times four hundred and ninety-five. So the data is quite large, it, it, which means that we have to use quite small and mini batch. Use quite small mini batch and the model parameters should be not large, so which also limited the number of, a lot of choice of our components. And also, we wish, we have a similar, similar experience to the song Bing's solution, we find that the. This. That static data is not that strong, it's actually it's a weak data, but weak features, so we still include this feature into the, into our solution. So and our task is simple, so giving the future one hour traffic flow by given the one hour traffic flow. So first, we do some experiments to about choose which models are better. Actually, we, we many use the HR net, which similar to the, it's also a type of image segmentation model. It's slightly, yeah, it's slightly similar to the unit, but different, make some difference about. Scales of the receptions, reception scales, yes. So in general, our experiment shows that the HR net performs. Performs better than the unit, and also we do an extra experiment to test the deep lab with three. But the things is deep lab with three, at least for the touch version, in the touching computation, the. It is using interpretation at the end, so the input shape and output shape are the same, but the performance is quite bad, so I think. If we want to apply the deep lab with three, maybe we need to modify the interpretation to the. To the upper convolution, but it takes a lot of time, so we give up the deep lab with three. And so in the following solution, our solution is many based on the HR net. You can see from that, at least in our experiment, it performs much better. And the next way, we also test some the. Which we should be the better hidden layer activation function, which had. Since the, we have only limited GPU memory, so we only consider in place activity function only. So we test the relu, relu, relu six and the leak relu, and finally, we found that relu performs best. And all of our models actually are based on the relu functions. This one is a formula for the relu is more similar, and I think most of us know it, but I, I. I suggest, I think, maybe other activity function like a switch, mesh, or. Jlu, GLU should be better, but because we have only limited computing results, and as though those. Active function might require large GPU memory, so we give up those ones, those methods. And next is our co-solution, actually, we. Handcrafted some features, features in. And concatenate to our, to the row inputs. First is about the panic feature. I don't want to explain much, but it means that we do some statistics, one days or, and one days or some days before and after the predict date. And we concatenate it to the, to the inputs, and we say that with this kind of features, the performance increase a lot. And the next, we also consider that the time we can hold features performs were very useful here, so. So actually, we point, we use table, table four to show that the holiday features, you can see that when we add the holiday features. To the, to the inputs, the also the input increase a lot, so if, finally, for every, every model of our solutions, we actually include these holiday features. So next one is actually the week feature, but. We put it here just because it's slightly innovative somehow. We consider that the, the, there is a common assumption for the conclusion new network that a representation. Should be irrelevant with respect to the data shift. But in most cases, at least in this special temporal data, this assumption is not as well, well, so we consider that we should maybe. Use some method to enhance the. Enhance the model capacities. So there are some proposed methods, like we can use a four connected layer to represent, to replace, replace the. The convolution kernels, or we can use a local connect layer, those two layers, layers are too large. In more the parameters, so we give them that, and third one is called the temporal attention. My teammate has also. Published papers using the temporal attention in the transportation models, and shows very good results, but. In this competition, we use, we're even much more simpler one, so we just concatenate a learnable tensor to the input, and let's. Optimizer to optimize the whole input. We see that it's, it's not a very strong features, but it, it. It also helps to, to stable our second place, I think. So the next one is about the training, so we trained on a mini batch of. Twelve with three times twenty-eight TI GPU. And we trained the whole. We trained each models for fifty episodes with initial learning rate of zero point zero one and linear learning rate decline. And it, it, it almost takes sixteen to twenty hours to train a model, so. And we also, in order, because we use. Distribute, distribute, distribute the learning schedule, so we have to also include the synchronized batch normalization into the, into the training. Then we also do some experiments about, about the choice of the optimizer. We test about SDT item and the lamb, and we finally choose the lamb, 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 yes, the lamb should be the, should be the best. In our solutions, all the models are trained based on the lamb. And next, we test the learning rate warm-up, so it also says with the warming, with the warm-up, it's become, the model becomes much more easy to train, and. We'll have better results, so for our solutions, we, warm-up is useful for our models. And the last thing, I think. Sun Bin, yes, the first, the champion should also include, use this method, so that we all include the variation set into the training, because. Due to the specific data splitting, actually, I think the variation set should be more important than the training, training set. It probably that if we just use a variation set to train the model, the results might be, might, might be also good enough. So then we, we show the, show the history of our online submission, so. Yes, actually. Before, just before the forty hours, before the end of the, of the competition, we did very job, actually. Just around the middle of the, in October, we have already going to the top, top three, and the, the. Top three in the scores, and later, we didn't do a lot of new experiment, so, yes, it's gonna be a little bit regret about this result for ours. That is our solution, thank you so much. Yeah.
That was very, very nice, thank you very much. So, sorry, now I need to absolutely know what your name is, sorry, because I, I thought it was Fan Yu Wu, but. I apologize, you said it was your teammate, so let's give you the honor you deserve. If, could you share your name, or because, sorry, I.
I'm Fan Yu, yes.
Oh, you are Fan Yu, I. Okay.
You call me Fan Yu Liu, I think, so that's just surname you pronounce wrong.
I apologize profusely, it's my. Yeah, sorry about that. Very interesting solution, I have a lot of question, but let me see whether other people. Do too. I think we have some, a question from Henry, could you elaborate more on the features from slide nine? What are they exactly, and how do you feed them into the network?
This one, right?
Yeah.
We pre-process the other inputs, and. I think it may be done by, yes, actually. It's not very easy to describe, but the simplest thing, we can see that we, if given the. Predict day, there will be some other features, no, there will be some. We, we know the date, right, so we can do some statistics of the before the days, or the, some days before the predict day, and some days after the predict day, and actually. We randomly sample the one, two, four periods. In one day and use it to estimate the average of a daily statistic, that is because for the testing, we have only maybe one to, from two, four periods, so we. Monitor this kind of situation, so that is a job six. Yes.
Very nice. Okay. I have another question from Alexander Gensler. Regarding the loss function choice, is there methodology, methodological reason behind your loss function choice? Or did you simply test out which worked best?
Loss function?
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't do anything about loss function, we just use MSE.
Yes, maybe. Maybe it's the optimizer. I think you had a slight, sorry.
Yeah, yes, I think.
So also with ELU and.
It's activation function.
Maybe the activation function, and I believe you also checked the optimizer, if I.
Yeah, yes, I checked both of them, so for the.
Sorry, Alexander, sorry, I didn't want to either, thanks, Alexander, he just clarified, it's the activation function.
Okay. So the question is, is a methodology reason behind your loss function choice, or did you simply test? It, of course, in most of the cases, relu is not the best one, right, because it will. It makes connecting numbers trainable somehow, so. So for this reason, we should consider that relu and leak relu should be performed better, right? And we also think that, like a switch or mesh, when the, some next in our have large. When the number become like zero, negative zero point five to zero, it will have large negative number, so that's what method works better. So that's why we test these two. Test those active functions, so we know that other active function will have better performance, yeah.
And, and, and so can you run me through that reasoning, why is the other ones that you, you had on the next slide, so the. Switch.
Switch mission. They have demonstrated to be useful, yeah, they should, yeah, they have been demonstrated to be useful and. Perform better, yeah.
But you didn't, you didn't, you didn't have the time to test it, essentially.
They are not in place, they are not in place active function, so we have, if we use them, then we have to reduce the mini batch size, which means that we have to. Take more time to train the whole network.
Understood.
That's, that's what we are.
Very good. I have a question from Anastasios Kuvellas. Any comment why you decided to use the validation data into the training process?
Of course, we should use that, because, because I, I, I told you that the, the training, testing, and variation split are total difference from last years.
Correct, that was on purpose.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you check the champion's solutions added in his GitHub, actually, he also include the variation into the training.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, it should be obvious, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're allowed to, obviously, you know, and anything goes, you can also do anything else, but good. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the validation set was actually in the latter part of the year, so I believe it was a hundred. Segments in the, in the second part of the year, and the first part of the year was the training set.
Yeah.
Good, I have a few questions, and please put more questions out there, so the training time, so I saw you had distributed on three to four. TI two thousand eighty, TI GPUs, okay? And how long was the, oh, yeah, you said sixteen to twenty hours to train a model? And you only had one model, or like Sun Bin, you had an ensemble and tried to?
Of course, in several of model, yes, actually, finally, we in seven, seven of models.
Sorry?
You find out, we actually in seven, seven.
Okay, seven models, and can you, can you comment a bit on what the differences were in these models, and apologies if I didn't catch that?
Oh, that's a slight difference, I think the charming solution, they are difference in the model architecture, but for ours. They are using same model architecture, so they are different, maybe in the different of a feature engineer, some of may. The lost some of the features, that's what we did, yeah. So actually, the model architecture are similar.
Okay.
Exactly same.
And understand, but then if I understood you correctly, so because you had feature engineering. And, understanding, but then if I understood you correctly, so because you had feature engineering in the, at the start, right? And, and there was a random element, I think that was what um Henry pointed out, because you said there are random choices. So did you then switch some of these feature selection things off? Or, uh, and, and you fed this into those seven models or how did you? Can, can you comment on that just a bit clearer?
Uh, could you, could you repeat again, sorry?
Sorry, I, I, I didn't understand what you said and might be very obvious to you. So let's say you have those several models, same architecture grade. But then do you feed, I mean, so you had, you outlined how you chose and engineered features at the start. I believe you also said you added a trainable element to a tensor, so I'm guessing that's.
Oh, yeah, it's one of the model, it's one or two, two or two of them.
Okay. I understand. And what are the, the other ones?
Uh, just missing some of them, I forgot. But you can check my, you can check my GitHub, I at least all the three months, seven months.
Understand, fantastic, no, no worries, no worries at all. Um, good. Um, and then this was actually, this was one, one question I had. Um, this trainable, this, I found that very interesting, this idea that you said you put a trainable element in the tensor. So just to be clear, and that, that was instead of using, um, yeah, so here, instead of using temporal attention fully connect layers, which I, I agree is too big, concatenate a learnable tensor, what exactly does that mean? So you, you then have another node in your graph that you can learn?
Uh, yes, exactly. So which means that for each cell or each pixels, we can learn a, learn a tensor to, to it, right? So because it has some geometric features, uh, inherent geometric features to the, to the cell. That's a way to memory, 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 the, memorize the, uh, these kind of things, that's what, what we think.
Interesting, okay. I should have a, a close look at that, very nice. Are there any other questions for you?
Yes, I have to say the time, time schedule is not very friendly for me, actually, it's five A M.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry about that. Um, I, I, I feel your pain. Um, yeah, we, we arranged it in, in, in European time, so, so sorry. But I also liked your comment about, um, I mean, I know that last year um, when the leaderboard changed at last moment, I mean, people submit when they submit. Um, maybe, maybe one thing, I think, um, based also on, on, on this observation, which I think you pointed out to us last year, we actually did a statistical analysis as well. So we wanted to know, you know, let's say if solutions are just very close together, are they statistically different? Nextly, we, we did and, and, and we published it and we'll do it this year as well. And I think I know that David Kyle will actually talk about that in, in, in the next, um, in the next slide. But I really like the, the um, architecture and your work, and I'm very glad that it, it went to the podium and of course, sometimes first second and so on, this is also a matter of luck. Fantastic, thank you very much, Fan Yu, and also that you are up at this time, local time for you. Um, if there are any other questions, if there are any other questions, then I shall continue to our last session of this morning. Brilliant, thank you very much indeed, have a, have a nice time, bye bye. So our last speaker this morning is Yingwei Xu from Shanghai Yaotong University in China. His teammates Harold from Microsoft Corporation and Shinghua University. Their solution also embraces the units and I'm very happy to yield the floor to him now.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you, how are you?
Okay, okay, thank you. And hello everyone, this is Jingwei Xu from Shanghai Yaotong University. And it's my great pleasure to present our, the place solution for the twenty twenty traffic forecasting challenge. And uh also thanks to my colleagues, Zhang Zhiyuan and Yun Boang. Uh, we summarize our work as towards a good practices of United for traffic forecasting. But actually, we build our work based on the backbone model unit. And uh the major part of our work is extending and improving the prediction performance on, based on the unit. And here, uh, for the following slides, uh, I will present our solution detail. And uh meanwhile, I will discuss our failure times and also some uh further thoughts about the evaluation, uh, evaluation metric, yeah. Okay, uh, so first of all, for the problem setup and the previous two presenters has uh detailed to talk about the, uh, this part. And here I just, uh, uh, show this briefly. So first of all, our task is to predict the traffic speed and volume. And uh actually, for each pixel in this video frame and the value includes the traffic information, that is the traffic speed and volume. And the value of a single pixel corresponds to a five minutes uh traffic uh in an area expanding over the one hundred meter times one hundred meter. And uh for the each traffic map at each time step, it has nine channels, which consists of the uh traffic speed and the volume uh on the four different directions. And uh different, also different from the previous year, the output corresponds to uh six time steps of five, ten, uh fifteen, thirty, forty-five and sixty minutes. And also, uh, we are required to predict uh the traffic information on three different cities, which has totally different uh road arrangements, okay? Uh, so first of all, our backbone model. And here I mainly briefly presented the uh architecture of this part because uh we implemented a convolutional neural work based on this model, which is also applied in the, uh, in the last year's challenge and achieved the best results. And uh as you're showing in this figure, uh, it is constructed with eight dense blocks as uh the encoder and the seven transpose convolution layers as a decoder. Uh, the output of the uh encoder part uh is also input to the uh decoder, decoder part, uh, which is actually a shortcut uh to uh parse, uh, to pass more uh information from the original image. And we also use this uh shortcut inside this dense blocks. Uh, each block has four convolutional layers. Each layer will be, will take the output of previous layer and the original input of this uh dense blocks as inputs. Uh, dense blocks are followed by average pooling to half the size of the feature map. And the last dense uh block is also followed by a, a single convolution layer. Uh, okay, that is almost all the architecture detail of our backbone model. And uh here is our first contribution. Actually, our uh solution is quite straightforward. Uh, the first thought is road mic, uh, road mic mask generation. And as a common prior knowledge, we can only drive on these routes. So however, the traffic information uh directly predicted, uh, predicted by the unit is unconstrained, uh, which might be out of the route. And uh so we generate a road mask frame for each city and uh directly add them to the results. Uh, specifically, uh, for each city and each direction, we calculate uh the average traffic speed over the whole training set. And if the value of a pixel in the average map is larger than zero, this position is set as one. And uh we thus have five mipes, uh, which corresponds to five directions for each city. And here we present uh the obtained road masks as shown in this figure. And uh these masks are actually directly multiplied to the outputs, uh, which tend to be effective in improving the, uh, the accuracy of the predicted results, yeah. And uh for the second part, uh, we also include a two-stage training study. Uh, the reason is, oh, is a semi as a previous, uh, as, uh, as a previous presentation. Uh, we found that uh the training data contains the first half of the year, which is from January to June. And but we need to predict the traffic flow of the half, uh, second half of the year. Uh, so actually, the track flow may be uh very different uh from uh, uh, according to the month of, uh, with different seasons. Uh, so uh we also tried to use some seasonal information to split the train size and the test set to check out, uh, to check the, uh, effectiveness of the seasonal information. Uh, we will give more details in the following slides. And uh directly based on the, of further, uh, further turning uh stage on the validation site, which is from the second half of the year. Uh, our, our fine-tuned model uh further improves the performance uh greatly. Uh, so here is, here is my results. Uh, our final model has been fine-tuned on the uh validation site. And uh as shown in this table, the first line is our baseline model, which is unit. And uh for the second line, we removed the fine-tuned process. And for the second line, we removed the road mask generation stage. And we can see that compared to the baseline model, uh, the road mask, uh, which corresponds to the sector rule, effectively improves the prediction accuracy uh by filtering out the impossible driving area. And meanwhile, the proposed two-stage training schema uh reduces the gap between the training and the testing sites, which also boosts the prediction performance by a large margin. Okay, and uh for the, uh, for the, uh, combining the above two aspects, uh, we achieve better uh results uh for the, for this traffic forecasting task. And uh for the following uh slides, I gave some further discussion about our attempts during the, uh, during this challenge. Uh, specifically, we discussed about the future directions of further improving our work in terms of uh three aspects. Uh, the first of all is seasonality, uh, because the traffic changes uh implicitly are related to the season. Uh, for example, uh, the Moscow has a long-term winter, uh, that the traffic speed tend, uh, tend to be low when it is during, uh, such kind of uh seasonality contained in the traffic data could be utilized to facilitate the traffic forecasting task. Uh, so we train a model with traffic data uh in, uh, in the Moscow city, uh, in the month of January, February and March. And we then tested on the data in the month of November and December. Uh, and these predictive results uh tend to be very good on this specific cities in Moscow. But uh however, on, on the other two cities, Istanbul and Berlin, uh, where the seasonal data is real and hard to capture, the prediction results are not so, actually not so satisfying. So as a future work, we think such a direction is still promising, that is utilizing the seasonal pattern for traffic forecasting. Uh, if the sufficient uh data is available for this task, yeah. Uh, and for the second part is about a knowledge transfer uh between three different cities. Uh, in this challenge, we also explored different methods to uh make full use of all these cities data. Uh, so for example, firstly, we try to uh find trains the targeted city using the well, uh, well-pretrained source model directly. Uh, however, it could uh not perform well in the target city. Uh, then we decide to adapt a transformable memory unit, uh, unit, uh, terminalized T M U uh into the existing uh backbone model. Uh, the T M U is uh actually uh specifically designed for the unsaturated training, uh, transfer learning problem uh using multiple pre-trained uh model from different source domains. Uh, it could distill useful knowledge from different source models. Uh, while using T M U can perform better than directly, uh, fine tuning, it is still hard to achieve the expected performance or better performance. Uh, here we actually have uh, uh, two differ, uh, two reasons. The first one is that uh the T M U, uh, the transformable, uh, transformable memory unit is uh designed for a C N based architecture while, uh, uh, sorry, the island-based models. Uh, well, our model is the C N based. Uh, and the second reason is that uh different cities may have a unit, uh, or different uh road network. Uh, and how to grasp the information of road networks for different cities is very crucial uh for the traffic forecasting. Uh, but uh well, it is still difficult to capture the uh road networks domain-specific knowledge for each city. Uh, capturing the shared knowledge between different cities seems uh to be very effective, but still very hard, uh, uh, much hard. Uh, and as a future work, uh, we think this direction is still promising. We may uh explore more effective ways to transfer uh the knowledge from the, uh, from, uh, from source cities to the target city. Uh, okay, for the last part, uh, about the evaluation metric. And uh actually, we, uh, this is a typical prediction task uh for the traffic forecasting. And uh as a longstanding problem is a prediction task. Uh, the evaluation metric based on the mean squared error might be, might not fully reflect the uh performance of the prediction model. Uh, uh, for example, as shown in this figure, uh, the first row uh is a ground truth sequence, while the second row refers to the uh predicted sequence. Uh, this sequence, uh, this example is actually selected from the top ten percent of the validation sequence in terms of the M S E. Uh, however, we can see that uh the predicted results are visually quite different from the ground truth. And uh so as a future work, it requires more, uh, in my opinion, it still requires uh more attention and effort to find uh more appropriate uh evaluation metric for this, uh, for this task. Okay, uh, okay, so that's all the presentation and thank you very much.
Fantastic, thank you very much indeed. There's a lot of food for thought and I, for one, have a lot of questions. But let's, let me see whether the audience um has, has one here. Um, yes, from Henry, actually a question I would have had as well, the mask generation. Um, first of all, very nice presentation. I was wondering about the traffic masks, shouldn't the unit be able to learn the masks by itself?
Uh, actually, uh, because different, uh, in this challenge, we only have uh three cities, right? And for each city, the road arrangement is very complicated. And if you, uh, me, uh, just force the, uh, in my opinion, if you just force the network to learn the route, I think this, it may be uh very hard for the, a very hard task for the, uh, for the network. And so, uh, oh, as a result, we directly uh filter or extract the road information from the data and uh as the mask to improve the prediction results, yeah.
Very nice, very nice indeed. I have a question, so the transfer is, uh, uh, learning you mentioned, that is a very, very, very interesting and iconic problem, I would say. So you said promising results and you had a, you had a, um, a reference there. Can you a little bit share what, what these results were?
Oh, you, you, you mean the?
Uh, can you quantify them? I mean, has it worked from one to the other? Is there a quantification you, you can give or, um, in what way is it promising? And if it's not quantif, that's fine too, or can you, can you tell us why you think it's promising? Because to me, this is one of the most iconic problems in traffic, I mean, it would be amazing. most iconic problems in traffic. I mean, it would be amazing.
Yeah, actually, uh, we, uh, during this challenge, we, uh, think of this, uh, task as a, a transfer learning task. And, uh, because, uh, as earlier mentioned, uh, uh, for example, on the Moscow data, uh, city, uh, if you train, uh, model on the, uh, winter season and if you still, uh, predicting, uh, uh, make the prediction on the same season and it might be, uh, very, uh, it might, it might be very, uh, useful. And for this part, uh, as I mentioned, the TMU, the transferable memory unit, uh, uh, in, uh, briefly, uh, briefly speaking, uh, this actually involves, uh, I, uh, in, uh, uh, include, uh, learnable memory of, uh, which is learned from the training data. And, uh, if the season pattern could be, uh, could hold in the, uh, training data and, uh, it would be, uh, it should be effective during the testing. And, uh, so, uh, in my opinion, if you could dig out or find some, uh, regular pattern uh, in the training data, uh, between the training and the testing data, you can, uh, uh, construct, uh, transfer learning uh, method to do the prediction. Uh, but, uh, act, uh, yeah, uh, in a practical view, you, uh, must also have some, uh, uh, some conditions. For example, you should have, uh, sufficient data to do the transferring. And, uh, oh, yeah, that's, uh, almost all my, uh, idea about this direction.
Well, that's very, very interesting. I should maybe mention that our second keynote of the day in the, uh, second session, uh, for today actually has a transfer learning component. So very much looking forward to this. I have a question from Michael McCritis. Nice presentation. Maybe I missed this. Can you please elaborate? Uh, once more on how you construct the roadmap mask from dynamic static data or how?
Oh, I see. Okay. Uh, I will explain, uh, with more details. So, so first of all, uh, all this, uh, road map are extracted from the dynamic data. Uh, actually, I like, uh, the previous presentations, I, we tried to, uh, directly, uh, use the stack data in during prediction, but, uh, the result turned to be, uh, not so promising. And it even hurts the, uh, the performance. And, uh, for this part to extract the roadmap, uh, and for, uh, to be more specific, uh, I, uh, I calculate, oh, yeah, I calculate the speed, the traffic speed uh, at each time step for each, uh, frame. And then, uh, it, uh, and then average, uh, the, uh, traffic speed over the whole year in the training data. Uh, if, uh, at each location, uh, at each location, uh, in the pixel, if the pixel value is greater than zero and, uh, uh, here it indicates that, okay, for the whole year, uh, the year, uh, uh, for the whole year, for the specific, uh, specific, uh, pixel, uh, the driving area has a traffic uh, flow. And I think it should be, it, it, uh, it, it should be have, uh, a route in this, around this point. So, uh, by doing so, we actually, uh, extract, uh, almost all the drivable, uh, area uh, in the, uh, in these three cities. Yeah, that's all the precision.
Very nice. That's very clear. I, I have a question. Maybe I, I missed it. Did you use, uh, any ensemble learning or several models?
Oh, okay, for this part, uh, we actually know, uh, so no, and, uh, uh, we, for each city, we trained one model. And for evaluation, uh, we didn't use any other, uh, data on other cities. Yeah.
Understand. But you didn't, you trained one model only and it wasn't an ensemble of model or like Sung Bin has done, just an average of the outcome. It was one model.
Yeah, because we only has one GPU.
Okay, okay.
It takes, it ac- it actually takes three days to train a whole, whole, uh, whole pipeline. Yeah.
Oh, my God. I'm, I, I, I'm sorry. Can I, can I ask you on the compute? So you used, and maybe you said this, and sorry if I, if I missed that. Uh, what, what compute did you use? And how long? So you said three days on what kind of the wall time?
Oh, it's, uh, it is, uh, uh, if I remember correctly, uh, the GPU is, uh, uh, it's a Titan. And we only has, uh, have one GPU and, uh, for, uh, to train a single model on a single city, it takes us, uh, around twenty hours to, uh, for twenty epochs.
I understand.
So it almost three days.
Very nice. Um, let me maybe repeat some questions we had for, for other participants from, uh, Anastasius. I, 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 um, liked his question and that I also said was a bullseye question earlier. Did you find that the static data helped or did you do any analysis? Or do you have any inkling whether it helped or actually the dynamic data was mostly the thing that makes it?
Okay, so, um, so to be honest, and, uh, we actually, uh, at the beginning of this challenge, we visualize the, uh, the stack data. And, uh, we didn't find, uh, useful, uh, pattern to, to facilitate the prediction. Uh, that's our, our findings. And, uh, and, uh, as a second stage, uh, we directly connect the stack data, uh, uh, the map to the, uh, to the prediction model. And we found, uh, no obvious gain or performance improvement. So, uh, as a final, uh, final stage, we directly, uh, uh, directly, uh, we don't, we don't use this, this part. Yeah.
Very nice. Again, good, good, uh, interesting outcome. And do you, would you say the same is true for the additional dynamic channel that we have the incidence channel of road blockages and stuff? Or did you find that helped?
Uh, you mean the nice channel?
Yes, correct. The ninth channel.
Actually, we, uh, I, I, actually, I don't have, um, I don't have many useful comments on this part because, uh, I think they should be useful. And, uh, we, we actually didn't, uh, do much, uh, do, uh, sufficient experiments to, uh, type, to validate our, uh, our thoughts or, uh, idea about this part. Yeah.
Fair enough. But your hunch would be maybe the dynamic channel was useful and the static ones maybe not.
I think it should be used more useful than the static one.
Okay, that's, that's very interesting. Any more questions, anyone? Um, well, if not, I would like to thank you very, very much for, again, a fantastic presentation. I'd like all the participants, um, uh, I would like to thank all the participants for a really fantastic morning session, very insightful. I have to say, it's really amazing to see such creative solutions, um, and makes me really proud, uh, I have to say. We have actually prepared a virtual coffee shop, um, where we can move everyone over. And there we can, we're all unmuted and we can chat, may, maybe not all at once, if, if you want to and relax a bit, that will also not be recorded. Um, and would be maybe nice if you want to exchange or ask, uh, people on, on their opinion. Um, and also chat to, to everyone involved. Um, and I should also recall that, of course, we have an afternoon session. Um, and, um, very much looking forward to seeing everyone there. We have, uh, another, um, great keynote speaker. As I sort of said, uh, there's a transfer learning element coming up. So, and you're of course all invited and I would hope you'd all participate. Um, and very much looking forward to seeing you in the coffee room chat.